Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall, to Council Chambers, and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, November 8th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For those unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is 10:25 a.m. today. We have eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special introductions and presentations to be made today. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Jan Perry.
That's her dad, right? But her mom didn't come? Okay. You come up here. I've got all my notes right there. Okay, and your dad's gonna come up too, right?
Yeah, the people.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. As councilperson of the 9th Council District, I'm always proud and pleased to introduce to the council and those who are watching on Channel 35, exceptional women, women who are not only intelligent and beautiful, but share their gifts with everyone else. And so it's my pleasure today to present an honored guest from the great nation of Ecuador. This is Ms. Ecuador, 2002 to 2003, Isabel Ontinera Pinto. At the age of 24, she has accomplished extraordinary things in her life and for her country. Her accomplishments and dedication to the people of Ecuador make her an ideal and appropriate voice for all people. Education is high on her list of priorities, and she graduated from the Gleon Hotel School in Switzerland, and from Wells School in England, with a bachelor's degree in tourism. Her education led her to her current position as the National Director of Natural Tourism Resources under the government of Ecuador. As Ms. Ecuador, Isabel's first priority is to support the efforts of the nonprofit foundation Nuestra Bejaza Ecuador by finding medical equipment that will be placed at the Ms. Ecuador Center located in Pueblito, province of Manabí. She also hopes to improve national tourism in Ecuador by sharing her love of Ecuador's natural beauty, including the colonial traditions and folklore, as well as the breathtaking beaches, spectacular valleys, and volcanoes in the Andes and unbelievable Amazon rainforests. Isabel continues to represent the best interests of her community by visiting Los Angeles to establish contacts with the Ecuadorian community and all people throughout our city, and to educate them about projects in her city and the need for medical supplies for these areas. With the help of Club Ambato of Los Angeles, a nonprofit California corporation, Isabel will reach out to 180,000 individuals here in Los Angeles from the Ecuadorian community. She is a dynamic, passionate, and devoted representative and an advocate for the people of Ecuador, and she will continue her dedication as she serves as Ms. Ecuador for this upcoming year. I would like to say, "Welcome to Los Angeles," and salute her. And I know that she will continue with all of the work that she has begun. And now, Ms. Ecuador.
(Applause)
Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall, to Council Chambers, and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday, November 8th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For those unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via council phone. It is 10:25 a.m. today. We have eight members present, two shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of special introductions and presentations to be made today. I'd like to begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Jan Perry.
That's her dad, right? But her mom didn't come? Okay. Okay, you come up here. I've got all my notes right there. Okay, and your dad's gonna come up too, right?
Yeah, the people.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President. As councilperson of the 9th Council District, I'm always proud and pleased to introduce to the council and those who are watching on Channel 35 exceptional women, women who are not only intelligent and beautiful, but share their gifts with everyone else. And so it's my pleasure today to present an honored guest from the great nation of Ecuador. This is Miss Ecuador 2002 to 2003 Isabel Ontonera Pinto. At the age of 24, she has accomplished extraordinary things in her life and for her country. Her accomplishments and dedication to the people of Ecuador make her an ideal and appropriate voice for all people. Education is high on her list of priorities, and she graduated from the Gleon Hotel School in Switzerland and from Wells School in England with a bachelor's degree in tourism. Her education led her to her current position as the National Director of Natural Tourism Resources under the government of Ecuador. As Miss Ecuador, Isabel's first priority is to support the efforts of the nonprofit foundation Nuestra Belesa Ecuador by finding medical equipment that will be placed at the Miss Ecuador Center located in Pueblito, province of Manabí. She also hopes to improve national tourism in Ecuador by sharing her love of Ecuador's natural beauty, including the colonial traditions and folklore, as well as the breathtaking beaches, spectacular valleys, and volcanoes in the Andes, and unbelievable Amazon rainforests. Isabel continues to represent the best interests of her community by visiting Los Angeles to establish contacts with the Ecuadorian community and all people throughout our city, and to educate them about projects in her city and the need for medical supplies for these areas. With the help of Club Ambato of Los Angeles, a nonprofit California corporation, Isabel will reach out to 180,000 individuals here in Los Angeles from the Ecuadorian community. She is a dynamic, passionate, and devoted representative, and an advocate for the people of Ecuador, and she will continue her dedication as she serves as Miss Ecuador for this upcoming year. I would like to say welcome to Los Angeles and salute her. And I know that she will continue with all of the work that she has begun. And now, Miss Ecuador.
Good morning, everybody, councils. It's a pleasure to me to be here in Los Angeles for the first time. And actually, with Club Ambato of Los Angeles, with all the people, all Ecuadorians that live here in the States, they are rounded together here in L.A., the people who lives here in L.A. We have different plans. We work in different areas, as my mom was telling us before. The medical equipment, we're now working to get some medical equipment donations to get it to Ecuador. And the main project I'm working at the moment is the recycling garbage, the trash we have in domestic areas. And we're working that together with the mayor of Loja, one of the main cities, the pioneer of this recycling system. We have been working in that, and we are planning to do that with the different queens of the different cities around Ecuador. And so we know that L.A. is one of the pioneers also in recycling here, and hopefully we can work as sister cities and sister countries and work together that. And well, we thank really much for all your help, for being here. Thank you very much. And well, I will give the word to the queen of the Club Ambato, please. Okay, sorry. I wasn't supposed to introduce her, but well, Christina, she's the queen of Club Ambato. She is actually working with me. She's helping me out with all the equipment and all the different projects, so we can help Ecuador from the resident people over here to Ecuador. Christina.
And thank you so much to Miss Ecuador for introducing to us Christina Salome Le Pisto. She has had a long history with Ecuador, dating back to her early childhood. She has attended preschool in Ecuador and gained valuable language skills that have aided her in her current educational goals. And most recently, when she returned to complete her 8th grade education abroad, learning a great deal about Ecuadorian culture, food, and customs. She has worked diligently to represent Club Ambato by dedicating her time to help needy children and elderly in Ecuador. Last year, she traveled to Ecuador and traveled to various charitable organizations such as a retirement home for indigent senior citizens, a daycare center for children, and incarcerated mothers. She has also worked with the previous Miss Ecuador to make contact with the Ecuadorian community here in Los Angeles, and will continue her work with the current Miss Ecuador. At the young age of 17, Christina has accomplished much for herself and her community. She is also a great representative for her organization, and I would like to welcome her as well and ask her to say a few words.
City Council members, Miss Ecuador, members of Club Ambato of Los Angeles, and honored guests. I first of all want to thank the Honorable Jan Perry from the 9th District for giving us this opportunity to address the City Council and the greater city of Los Angeles. I would also like to acknowledge and to thank the City Council for their interest and support of the Hispanic community. The recognition you are giving to Miss Ecuador, Isabel Ontonera, and myself is greatly appreciated. I am committed to helping those less fortunate than us, both here in Los Angeles and in Ecuador. My activities include raising funds for Club Ambato, which is dedicated to sending medical and educational supplies to Miss Ecuador's foundation, Nuestra Belesa. In addition, the club is directly supporting a very poor public primary school in the city of Ambato, Ecuador. In recognition of our support, this school has decided to officially change their name to the School of Club Ambato of Los Angeles. And next February, I will have the honor of being there to represent the club and donate supplies along with Miss Ecuador. I humbly accept this recognition award on behalf of the Club Ambato of Los Angeles. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce the people who are here, the Ecuadorian people, that were glad to be here and really thankful for everything. Well, first of all, I would like to introduce my dad, Camilo Ontonera. Vicky, the secretary of the club. Well, and the resident members of the, actually, and the president, actually, is here. The president of Club Ambato, Marco López, and he has been working really hard to get all these donations and everything. Well, and I hope you actually think a lot about South American countries and Latin countries, that we actually need a lot of help. This project of recycling garbage is really important for us, so we will be really grateful if you consider working with us and consider having these plans done in the future.
Thank you very much. We'll go in the back and take the pictures there.
Thank you very much. Wonderful, Jan. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Take this back with you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to call, I believe Glenda Ahidi is here, to let everyone know that this month is National American Indian Heritage Month. Oh, great, okay, great, okay. I'm being joined here at the podium by Glenda Ahidi, Corinne Hicks, Dr. Rose Clark, and David Rambo. Dr. Clark and David Rambo are commission members from the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission. Native American Indian Heritage Month celebrates the rich culture and tradition of Native Americans and recognizes contributions that they have made to all of us. Today, I have with me members of the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission. This commission is dedicated to promoting the development of programs and funding sources to serve urban American Indians, and advocates for legislation and policies on behalf of this community. They join me here to officially commemorate this national month of celebration and reflection into the past, present, and the future of all American Indians. Since 1976, the month of November has been designated as the time when our nation should come together to learn, explore, and celebrate the history of American Indians. It is a time to remember people like Sacagawea, the Shoshone Indian woman who helped guide Lewis and Clark in their exploration of the uncharted West, and celebrate the brave service of the Navajo code talkers for their indispensable help during World War II. According to the 2002 census, California recorded over 600,000 residents who reported themselves as American Indians and Alaska natives, alone or in combination with one or more races. And nationally, there are over 4 million people who reported as American Indian and Alaska natives, which adds up to approximately 2% of our entire population. The National American Indian Heritage Month will be commemorated this year with a number of celebrations and events that will educate the public about culture of yesterday, today, and tomorrow. So I invite and encourage all residents of our city of Los Angeles to join me in celebrating American Indian Heritage Month. And now, I would like to ask Glenda Ahidi to join me to say a few words about the festivities and programs that will be going on this month.
Thank you, thank you so much, Jan. Really, really appreciate coming before the City Council today, and I really would like to turn this over to our community leadership who is with us. Corinne Hicks is the chairperson of the L.A. City-County American Indian Commission.
Good morning. My name is Corinne Hicks, and as Glenda stated, I am the chairperson of the Los Angeles City- County Native American Indian Commission. I'm also a member of the Pachanga Band of Luceno Mission Indians here in California. Another thing that we're trying to, coming before you today to bring your attention, that Los Angeles City is home to the second-largest urban American Indian population in the United States. The county of Los Angeles is home to the largest. Over 50,000 American Indians call the city of Los Angeles their home. We at the Indian Commission work hard to advocate for the rights and for services to this population, and we are looking forward to working more with the City Council here in Los Angeles City to better the services that are available to this population. I'd like to introduce two City Council, or two, yeah, City Council appointees to the Indian Commission, Dr. Rose Clark and Dave Rambo.
Good morning. My name is Rose Clark. I'm a mayoral appointment to the Los Angeles City-County American Indian Commission. I'm also a member of the Pachanga Band of Luceno Mission Indians here in California. Another thing that we're trying to, coming before you today to bring your attention, that Los Angeles City is home to the second-largest urban American Indian population in the United States. The county of Los Angeles is home to the largest. Over 50,000 American Indians call the city of Los Angeles their home. We at the Indian Commission work hard to advocate for the rights and for services to this population, and we are looking forward to working more with the City Council here in Los Angeles City to better the services that are available to this population. I'd like to introduce two City Council, or two, yeah, City Council appointees to the Indian Commission, Dr. Rose Clark and Dave Rambo.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Rose Clark. I'm a mayoral appointment to the Los Angeles City-County American Indian Commission. I'm also a member of the Navajo Nation and have been an L.A. city resident for the past 13 years, when I first came out here to attend college. I continue to plan on being a public servant to L.A. City so that we can improve the health outcomes for American Indians and Alaska natives in Los Angeles City. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the city and the City Council members for supporting the L.A. City-County Indian Commission by presenting each of you with a Native American Heritage Month poster, as well as some information on the events and the programs that are in L.A. City-County. So I would like to give this over to Jan to present to each of you as well.
My name is Dave Rambo. I'm also appointed to the City-County Indian Commission by the mayor. I'm a Paiute Indian from the Bishop area. I too came to Los Angeles in 1974 to go to school, and I'm stuck here, I guess. Actually, it's a very nice place to live. I'm also a Vietnam vet, and I want you all to remember that Monday as Veterans Day, and to remember those who served the country, and the young men and women who are currently about to serve the country in a foreign country. So just remember that. We are, we're proud to have friends who are part of the City Council and a part of the county supervisors, the county supervisors. We especially have friends who are, who have provided us with assistance and help throughout the years. Without, without these people, our community would not be able to prosper, or have, or move ahead in the manner that we have. I'm also the executive director for United American Indian Involvement, which is an Indian organization that's been around Los Angeles since September, I mean, I'm sorry, June of 1974. We initially were a Skid Row program not too far from here, and 1999, we moved to our new locations. We also would like to remember a person who has helped the city and the county of Los Angeles in the past. His name was Robert Sundance. Some of you may have, may know him or know of him. He was an advocate for our community, for all the city governments and the county governments. But the reason that we're really here is that we would like to honor Jan Perry for all the things that she has done for our community, especially during the census, when we had some difficulties identifying who and who isn't American Indian. I also, we also understand that Jan Perry is by heritage American Indian also, and we're very proud of that. So what we'd like to do is present her with this blanket.
Thank you. That's nice. I love that. Thank you.
As American Indian people, we always make it an effort to show respect and honor those who are part of our, our community, and we're, you know, we do need, we do need the role models, and it's very, we're real happy to have her on the, on the council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks so much. Okay, let's go take a picture from the back. Look from the back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. Next, we'll have the Honorable Tom Labange.
Mr. President, it's good to see you, 1st District.
Good morning, sir.
Okay. This morning, I have with me a very special native of Los Angeles, Ronald B. Flynn, and I'm saluting him for his many, many years, over 36 years of service to this country. And if I might add, that he has served well in the armed forces and done a wonderful job. Brigadier General Ronald Flynn, a native of Los Angeles, served this nation during the Vietnam War as an infantry platoon leader and as a pathfinder for detachment commander in the famed 1st Air Cavalry Division, where he was decorated for valor and wounds received leading the hazardous night combat parachute jumps against an enemy stronghold in 1967. And whereas Brigadier General Flynn, upon his return from Vietnam, served in the city of Los Angeles as a U.S. Army Special Forces Officer in the Armed Forces Reserve over a decade, commanding several teams and a company of Green Berets. Whereas Brigadier General Flynn served two decades in the California Air Army National Guard during the Cold War while commanding missions, by preparing combat missions ready for service if they need be. Throughout his service to the National Guard, he has worked in various roles, in the earthquake, on the unfortunate situation of the Los Angeles riots, on any humanitarian effort, not only in Los Angeles, but in the state of California. He has served well, but over for 36 years, and it was appropriate that on this day, we invite him to City Council to be honored for his service. So therefore, be it resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council does hereby commend Brigadier General Ronald Flynn for his unselfish service to the city of Los Angeles, to the state of California, and to the United States for his service to the military. It's signed by myself, seconded by Jan Isan from the San Pedro District of Los Angeles. Please salute Brigadier General Ronald B. Flynn, California State Military Reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Councilmembers, I would like to introduce some of the folks with me today, some lifelong friends, coworkers, in a very important program we work there in Los Angeles, that's work on the middle school kids, kids from all of your districts. Mike Johnson, longtime friend, since 2nd grade, we've known each other, former Special Forces officer, we served together. His brother, Tom Johnson, reactive in the community, works with the St. John's Home for the Fathers over on Adams, and very involved with Urban Day High School, a graduate loyal high school, one of Los Angeles' hardest-working citizens. To his right is Wanda Moats, our assistant coordinator for Angel Gate Academy. Elsa Morales, on her right, Mr. Rick Bame, please stand up, please. Mr. Rick Bame, and Richard Butler. These folks out there with the camera, all these folks work with me on Angel Gate Academy. I'm part of the team. I work with them and for them on a very important intervention program for middle school kids here in Los Angeles. It is the only program as kind in the entire nation that takes middle school kids 11 to 13 years old to a resident program that's military-oriented, that's strictly volunteer. We've been doing this for eight years for the kids from your districts. Every middle school is reached. You have several in your areas that have sent kids up there. I want to make you aware of the program. It's a vital program that's been funded by Roba Alward, recently, the Congresswoman from Los Angeles, who's picked up the ball when Julian Dixon passed away, gotten us the money and the funding. We're in business for another year, meeting the needs of your kids and your families and your districts, and I want you to know that, to know these great people who work with me. I'm a native of L.A., born and raised. I love L.A. Went to school here, worked here most of my life. I'm an Angelino, and I'm honored, honored that you would honor me today, sir, with this proclamation. I am very grateful. And I want to take the time to thank you, Mr. Labange, and all, and all of your fellow council members that are in the trenches every day for your constituents and for the greater need of L.A., continuing to make L.A. the best city in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Tom here also, as he mentioned, St. John of God, that great rest home at Adams and Western, and Brother Patrick.
Yeah, it's good to see yous. Brother wanted to be here and give his best, but he says you all know him too well already.
All right, good.
Okay. Next, we'll have Councilmember Badiya.
Muy buenos dias, Los Angeles. Demos una cordial benvenida a nuestras colegas de la ciudad de Tijuana y especialmente al honorable Jesus Gonzalez Reyes, alcalde de Tijuana. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to ask you to join me in giving a very warm welcome to our colleagues from the city of Tijuana and especially the leader of the delegation, the Honorable Mayor of the city of Tijuana, Jesus Gonzalez Reyes. Mayor Reyes won election to become mayor of Tijuana in July of 2001, was sworn in in December of 2001, and represents more than 1.2 million residents. Prior to his election as mayor of Tijuana, he served as a federal deputy in the legislature from 1991 to 1994 and from 1997 to 2000. He's a native of Tijuana and is a graduate of the Tijuana Institute of Technology. There's more than one, it's not just in Massachusetts. And is here these days on a visit to both the Los Angeles area as well as the Orange County area, seeking to strengthen economic ties between Tijuana and Southern California, but also to learn from municipalities throughout the region, and especially here in Los Angeles, where he has meetings scheduled to visit the Los Angeles Police Department and take some of our law enforcement strategies to improve the city of Tijuana. He has meetings with the Department of Water and Power. He has meetings to learn more about our uses of technology, our strategies when it comes to transportation and housing for the benefit of the residents of Tijuana. And I wanted to bring him to council to call attention to his visits, certainly to introduce him to the city and the city to him as one of our partners. And it certainly makes me proud to quote Newsweek magazine, which declared Tijuana, and I quote, "one of the world's eight new cultural meccas." Tijuana is in the middle of an artistic flowering that has drawn attention from television executives and museum curators from New York to Tokyo. There's a lot happening in Tijuana, and it's bolstering not just the city of Tijuana but the entire region on both sides of the border. Colleagues, please join me in giving a very warm and official welcome to the mayor of Tijuana, Jesus Gonzalez Reyes. Bienvenido a nuestra ciudad y por favor reciba este reconocimiento. Y si nos puede honrar con unas palabras, would you like to say a few words?
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to receive this proclamation, and I'd like to express the message that we've been giving out to the world nowadays. Tijuana has almost 2 million people right now, more than 20 universities, the lowest unemployment rate of the country. Tijuana has many, many positive things, and we're in the middle of a campaign to touch all the cities, all the counties, all the city councils next to us so that they can know, get to know a little more of our city. You are invited to our city to get to know it. We will be really interested in having you there and serving you as you deserve. It's an honor, Alex, to be here, and it's an honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of the people of Tijuana. You're invited to my city whenever you want to come down, and we'll treat you as you deserve. Thank you.
Maybe even this weekend. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you, Council President Padiya. Muy brevemente bienvenidos a la delegación, todos los miembros, el alcalde, los concejales. Como el jefe del comité de desarrollo económico, especialmente espero que en el futuro el negocio entre los dos ciudades y la amistad entre los dos ciudades se hará más fuerte. I just wanted to say to the delegation and to the mayor and the council members, I hope as Chair of the Economic Development Employment Committee, that we will strengthen the economic ties between our two cities, the friendship between our two cities. We certainly are proud to have our counterparts here today in council, and enjoy your stay, and we'll look forward to coming and visiting you too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. I believe Councilmember Zain would like to share a few words.
Oh, and one other thing before he says that, we have a Reyes up there too, so we've got two Reyeses leading the show today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Mr. Mayor, I ride with a number of police officers, former police officer myself, down to Tijuana annually on a fundraiser with your police department. And your police department's been very gracious to us over the years. They've been wonderful with hosting us as we travel down there. We have about five or six hundred motorcycle riders that go down, and it's a fundraiser for your police department. And I will be in touch with you as we travel down there this next year, so maybe we can have a survey set together as we celebrate. Thank you, and thank you for being here this morning.
Si me permiten, más quiero decir bienvenido. Es un orgullo ver alcalde Reyes como líder asgo de Tijuana. Pero también reconozco que es una ciudad que sí es un buen vecino y espero que en el futuro podemos seguir adelante como una acción compartiendo los recursos que tenemos que es nuestra gente. Muchas gracias.
I want to allow the mayor an opportunity to present the members of the delegation that are here with him, but also I failed to mention, and I think this is going to raise a lot of eyebrows, so I want to emphasize this. Part of Mayor Reyes' efforts is to develop a municipal bond package as part of their infrastructure development and economic development, taking advantage of Standard and Poor's double-A rating of their city's finances. And I see Bill Fugioke here, he understands how important that is. It's the highest municipal bond rating than any other city in the country of Mexico. So I wanted to commend the mayor for his leadership in that and give him another opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, and I would like to, please excuse my English, and please allow me to speak in my first language, which is Spanish. Muchas gracias por permitirme estar aquí. Quisiera presentar a quien me acompaña, el regidor Agustín Santiago Arreola, que es miembro del Cabildo. Nos acompaña también el secretario de desarrollo económico Humberto Insunza, el director de relaciones públicas William Yu. Nos acompaña también Paola Navarro, directora de relaciones internacionales. Nos acompaña también Agustín Cisneros y Rubén Smith, que son nuestros representantes en el condado de Orange. Y quisiera aprovechar para agradecer todo el esfuerzo que hacen policías, ex policías, organizaciones, organismos, empresarios de esta región en ayuda a la población de Tijuana. Thank you very much for all your help. Thank you very much for all your support. We know of many, many organizations that go there every week, every month, every year to help our people. On behalf of them, thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. It's an honor to always be surrounded by the fine members of the Los Angeles Police Department. And today, I have the honor of presenting a resolution to the Continuing Education Delivery Plan. And people may wonder, what is the Continuing Education Delivery Plan? It's a program developed by the Los Angeles Police Department, and it trains personnel, both sworn and civilian, in a number of disciplines. Created to meet the current and future training needs of the Los Angeles Police Department, been used to meet mandated training by the California Peace Officer Standard in Training and the United States Department of Justice Consent Decree. It's the largest training program implemented in the history of the Los Angeles Police Department. It has been used to train over 40,000 sworn and civilian employees in less than two years on topics such as constitutional law, ethics, use of force, duty to report misconduct, tactical firearms, arrest and control techniques, and that's just a few of the disciplines that are instructed. The results of the training have been impressive. The instructor evaluations for the training have been consistently rated outstanding, and the training has certainly improved the skills and competency of all LAPD sworn and civilian personnel. And in recognition of this successful training program, I would like to recognize the staff of, referred to as the CEDP, for their tireless efforts in creating new and innovative training within the Los Angeles Police Department. And I had the opportunity recently to attend the conflict management module, and I found it very informative, an eight-hour course, very, very informative, how to resolve disputes. And it was developed by the police department, since many of the issues that result in personnel complaints start with employee versus employee. A wonderful program, and the resolutions presented to the unit, and speaking on behalf of the unit, we have representatives here. Is it going to be the lieutenant or the commander?
I'm going to introduce everybody.
Okay, here we go. We're going to have Lieutenant Murphy introduce, and then we'll have the commander take over. And I think we may see in the very near future a couple more stars on that collar, if rumors are accurate. Well deserved, well deserved. Lieutenant Murphy.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank Councilmember Zain for this great award. I can tell you that we will frame it and it will be hung up at the police academy. The award, not him. And thank you on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department. I'd like to introduce all the staff that is here right now and begin with my personal staff. The first person is Police Officer Amelia Lugo, which is right here. Then we have Police Officer Susan Torres. We have Police Officer Julie Izuka. Sergeant Christopher Booker. We have the commanding officer of Continuing Education Division, that's Captain Bill Sutton. We have the commanding officer of Rampart Area, who was the former commanding officer of Continuing Education Division, that's Tom Runyon. We have the commanding officer of Critical Incident Investigation Division, who was also the former commanding officer of CED, and that's Captain Sean Kane. We have Dr. Robin Green. She is the Director of Police Training and Education and played a tremendous role in this development of the Continuing Education Delivery Plan. And last, I'd like to introduce Commander George Gascon. He's the commanding officer of Training Group, and he wants to say a few words up here. Commander Gascon.
You know, it's really an honor to be here today, and I said this on behalf of the police department and Councilman Zain, I thank you very much. This has been a true team effort. This is, although we're here receiving the award, the reality is that this was a tremendous effort by the community. The development of this training included people from the UCLA School of Public Policy. It included people from the Human Relations Commission, both the county and the city. Also, we had people from the U.S. Department of Justice participate in this process, and we had many community members as well as a variety of people from the department. So this is really an example where even the, we had the police protectively got an early stage, be a participant in the development of the training. This has been a true product of teamwork, and on behalf of all those people that really deserve the congratulations for these, I want to accept this award, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more presentation to make.
Yes, before the Men, Women, and Blue leave, I just want to take the time to thank you for all the hard work that you continually demonstrate, but more importantly, the ability to create these partnerships with the county, with the university, with these private groups. When we realize we only have 9,000 officers in a city that's over 3 million, we need to be creative in how we leverage these resources, and I want to thank you for that creativity and make our community safe. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I have one more presentation this morning, and this is for Odell Stewart. Odell, the pen man. Odell Stewart, we see him around here, a friendly face from General Services Custodial Services Department. He's been with the city for over eighteen years, hard worker who starts early morning at 7:30. He's been maintaining maintenance in this facility for many, many years. He's been involved in my office for over a year, and it's always a pleasure to see him coming around with his bright smile and his display of pens, and he's got, takes much pride in his dedicated work and his ethics and his values to make sure that our facilities are well maintained. So Odell, Custodian Appreciation Day 2002, your extraordinary performance and pride in your service truly enhances the appearance of City Hall and are truly worthy of praise and recognition. And I see you sometimes in the City Hall, but you've never been before the camera, and here you are. And congratulations to you, Odell. A couple words from you, please.
All I can say is thank you. Happy I got it. That's all I can think about.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Wait, wait, wait.
Just a minute, please.
We've got some comments from our colleagues.
I just wanted to comment, we've had the pleasure of knowing each other since I was probably about 21-years-old, since I worked for Tom Bradley. And you always have a smiling face and working hard, and I'm so glad that Dennis Zain took the leadership to acknowledge you today. And you're an unsung hero here in the City Hall, but we really appreciate all that you have accomplished and been a good force here.
Councilmember Labange.
Mr. President, I also want to follow Councilmember Gruel's comment. Yesterday was wonderful, they had all the custodians at 2 o'clock for Custodian Appreciation Day, and I think it is absolutely great that Dennis Zain brought you in, Odell, and I wanted to not give you a resolution, but I have two pins for you.
All right, Tom.
What do they say?
The kids say vote for anybody but Holden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I'd like to call up Councilmember Garcetti.
Councilmember colleagues, I've invited folks to join me, so I know Councilmember Labange's going to join me, Councilmember Holden, Han, Gruel, Mr. Weiss, you're more than welcome to join us, but I think Mr. Reyes has to stay up there to make sure we still have a chair for this meeting. It gives me great joy, we were just, I'll try to make this a good transition, we were just talking about folks that clean up. Well, we have some more folks here to honor today who have cleaned up. The world champion, Los Angeles Galaxy, please give the world champions a hand and welcome them. Our city, city of angels, city of champions welcomes yet another champion team. It has been a great year for Los Angeles. We had the Lakers, we had the Sparks, we'll still claim the Angels while we're at it, but more than anything else, this is a city of soccer. This is a city whose number-one sport, in terms of what the kids play, what our communities play, is soccer. It's football. And we know that the Galaxy have come so close so many times, three times, they made it into the championships, the finals, and had to go away unfortunately without the trophy. But this year, they did it. On any given weekend in Los Angeles, at any given park in this great city, we can find thousands of children, teenagers, and adults playing and living soccer. Los Angeles is one of the meccas for soccer in the United States, and now our team, the Los Angeles Galaxy, has honored us with a national championship. It's an honor for me to recognize the leadership the Galaxy team has taken in bringing soccer to the limelight here. Before presenting a symbol of our appreciation with a certificate and the rest of the council here, I would like to have a representative of one of our local soccer leagues say a few words in one second. Paco Serrano, who's one of the coordinators of the Anowak Youth Soccer Association. Anowak involves over 1,000 young people in soccer. They are preparing for the future, many Pescadito Ruizes, and I think we should be proud that the Galaxy had the MVP this year with El Pescadito himself, Carlos Ruiz. The future Kobe Joneses, as well as many other future stars right there in our community. Let me just say something briefly in Spanish, and then I'll turn. Let me just say something briefly in Spanish, and then I'll turn the microphone over to Paco and to my colleagues before we honor the Galaxy. Buenos dias. No es un secreto que el futbol soccer es el deporte favorito en Los Angeles. En cualquier fin de semana, en cualquier parque de esta gran ciudad, nos encontramos con miles de niños, jóvenes y adultos que juegan y viven el futbol. Los Angeles es uno de los meccas de futbol soccer en Estados Unidos, y ahora nuestro equipo, El Galaxy, nos honra con su compa- acompañato nacional y su presencia hoy en la cámara de consejo. I also want to say one thing about the Galaxy, is they are truly a Los Angeles team, an international team. When you look, they've got players from Venezuela, from Guatemala, from El Salvador, from Mexico, from New Zealand, from the United States. They've just acquired a player from Korea as well, who's going to be coming here next year, and they represent what is great about this city. So I'm going to ask Paco to come forward, say a word, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues before we honor the Galaxy. And I have to say also for the record, we expected more players here. We are blessed to have the ones that are here, but one of the planes that was due to land couldn't land because of this unseasonable weather, so we are here in all of their honors. But first, Paco, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of Anawak and all the great players of soccer in Los Angeles.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Francisco Serrano. Soy coordinador general de la Liga de Fútbol Anáhuac. Queremos felicitar junto con los niños del equipo Galaxy, al equipo Galaxy por su campeonato y darles las gracias al concejal Eric Garcetti por su invitación. Gracias.
Uh, Councilmember Gruel.
Well, I just want to add my congratulations to Galaxy. And you're right, soccer is everywhere in our city, and it is an exciting game for so many of our young people, women and men, which is a nice thing, and girls and boys in Los Angeles. So just want to congratulate as well the Galaxy team and making us all proud here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Congratulations, team, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for hosting this terrific event. I'm just trying to add it up. When one year we have baseball, basketball, and soccer world championships in the same metropolitan area, that's pretty extraordinary. I don't know how you could do, but that's a three-peat in one year. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate Galaxy on a terrific championship. You really made us proud. You, you got lost a little bit there in the limelight, but we are so excited about you and proud, and you have done more, in my opinion, to give girls and boys all over Los Angeles a dream that they too can one day compete on a champ- championship team. I just opened six new soccer fields in San Pedro called the Field of Dreams. We have more young girls and boys that are playing soccer than any other sport in the harbor area, and we never have enough soccer fields. So congratulations and thanks for giving every girl and boy in Los Angeles a role model and something to be excited about. Congratulations.
Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I just want to join my colleagues in congratulating the Galaxy team for being the champions of soccer here in the U.S. It's a tough game, very competitive, high-spirited, and those individuals who follow the sport of soccer loves the game even more than baseball and football and basketball. Soccer, they love, in some countries, a lot of folks die at those games. So, but that's how much they love it, especially when their team don't win. So I must tell you, I gave you a chance, you still, you wanted to go last. You know, I used to go last, but not you last. In any case, I played the game of soccer long before these individuals were born, even their parents. And back in New Jersey, it was our number-one sport in junior high school and in high school. And tough, as I said, competitive, as I know it to be. I got kicked in the chins a few times, shins, and that's when I gave up the game, and I want to congratulate these guys for carrying on, because it is a tough game. Congratulations once again for your victory.
Let's hear it for the great striker, Nate Holden. Next, Tom Laban.
Thank you. I wanted to be a little more positive than Nate was there, but Nate's very positive because he brought down the, the team from the Korean team and their fans when they had that World Cup fever here, and there was so much excitement, so all this excitement around soccer. But it's an absolutely wonderful game that runs for time, and there's no timeouts, which is so interesting. But I want to salute the Galaxy, but I also want to salute the coaches and salute the trainers and the whole team, everybody around who put the team on the field that led to the championship, and wish them well. They carried the great name of Los Angeles to the heights of their league, so they're very worthy of this honor. And Mr. Garcetti, thanks for bringing them in and acceding the appointment of soccer fields. We need more fields for, for dreams of players to play, girls and boys, men and women, everybody to play on fields. But congratulations to the Los Angeles Galaxy world champions.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to congratulate the Galaxy for being that role model. I remember when Anawak, back six years ago, they were all parents just struggling to find a place to play, and now we have our dream of playing in the Taylor Yards for soccer. We have other places in the city, hopefully parts of the cornfield, but the bottom line here is without the Galaxy, the young people won't have those role models. I want to thank you for being that particular presence in our community, and thanks to the parents of Anawak for all the great things. Gracias por su trabajo, por su apoyo para nuestros niños en el futuro, y el Galaxy por todo lo que han demostrado, que tenemos héroes para poder seguir en el futuro, y gracias por todo el trabajo que han hecho para nuestra ciudad y por ser los campeones. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes. Let me just say the names of the team before we invite Ralph Perez, one of the coaches up here, to, to say something. The head coach, Siggy Schmidt, who hails from Germany, general manager Doug Hamilton, the players, goalkeepers Kevin Hartman, Matt Reese, defenders Danny Kaliff, Adam Frye, Ezra Hendrickson, Alexi Lalas, which, or Lealas, excuse me, which many of us will remember from the Olympics, Tyrone Marshall, midfielders Alex Benard, Mauricio Cienfuegos, Simon Elliott, Kobe Jones, Jesus Ochoa, Peter Vaganas, who's here today, Sasha Victorine, forwards Chris Albright, Isaiah Bardales Jr., Gavin Glinton, who is also here today, Hercules Gomez, Alejandro Moreno, who joins us as well, Brian Mullen, Carlos Ruiz, who was the league MVP, and who in front of, let me make sure I get this right, sixty, a record, sixty-one thousand three hundred and sixteen fans in, satisfyingly, Foxborough, Massachusetts, where I think some Massachusetts folks were chanting "Beat LA" yesterday as the Lakers played the Celtics, so we should remind them of this game. Carlos Pescadito Ruiz netted a golden goal in sudden death overtime, propelling us to victory. And last, McKinley Tennyson. So if we could invite up right now Ralph to say a few words on behalf of the team and any of the players who'd like to say anything too.
First of all, it's an honor to be here, because Los Angeles is the city of champions, as has been said already. But for the Galaxy, it's a team that I think that, as we know, and as this young man over here said it, is that it is a global sport, and we have traveled all over the world. We've played and we've beaten the national team of China, we've, we've gone to Argentina, we've been to Chile, next year we go to Spain, and just recently, that you folks aren't even aware of, the Galaxy, it was rated as the twenty-fifth club in the world, ranked twenty-fifth in the world. We're very excited about our title, and we're very excited about keeping the championship in Los Angeles, as are colleagues down the road here, the Staples Center, the Sparks, and the Lakers. We're very also excited about our new home, that our owner, Mr. Philip Anshutes, has committed to building a soccer-specific stadium down in Carson that will seat twenty-seven thousand and will be the next, the training center for also not only the Galaxy, but our new U.S. national teams. So it's an exciting year, the way we ended it, but it's even going to be better next year. And I just want to take this time to not only thank you folks, but all the fans that we do have in Los Angeles, because not only are we the best team, but we have the best fans, and we live and work and play in the best city in America. Thank you.
Well, joining here with my colleagues, it gives us great pleasure to present the Los Angeles Galaxy soccer team, this championship, congratulations on winning your first Major League Soccer Cup championship. We know it will not be your last. Congratulations from all of us. Pose for a picture altogether? Yeah. Okay, come, let's go in front of this. Let's do it, let's do it in chambers. Back to back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one more presentation to make.
Yes, before the Men in the Women in Blue leave, I just want to take the time to thank you for all the hard work that you continually demonstrate, but more importantly, the ability to create these partnerships with the county, with the university, with these private groups. When we realize we only have nine thousand officers in a city that's over three million, we need to be creative in how we leverage these resources, and I want to thank you for that creativity and make our community safe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one more presentation this morning, and this is for Odell Stewart. Odell the Pin Man. Odell Stewart, we see him around here, a friendly face from General Services Custodial Services Department. He's been with the city for over eighteen years, hard worker who starts early morning at seven-thirty. He's been maintaining maintenance in this facility for many, many years. He's been involved in my office for over a year, and it's always a pleasure to see him coming around with his bright smile and his display of pins, and he's got, takes much pride in his dedicated work and his ethics and his values to make sure that our facilities are well maintained. So Odell, Custodian Appreciation Day 2002, your extraordinary performance and pride in your service truly enhances the appearance of City Hall and are truly worthy of praise and recognition. And I see you sometimes in the City Hall, but you've never been before the camera, and here you are. And congratulations to you, Odell. A couple words from you, please.
All I can say is, thank you. Happy I got it. That's all I can think about.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Wait, wait, wait. Wait a minute, just a minute, please.
We've got some comments from our colleagues.
I just wanted to comment, we've had the pleasure of knowing each other since I was probably about twenty-one years old, since I worked for Tom Bradley. And you always have a smiling face and working hard, and I'm so glad that Dennis Zein took the leadership to acknowledge you today. And you're an unsung hero here in Los, in the City Hall, but we really appreciate all that you have accomplished and been a good force here. Thank you.
Mr. President, I also want to follow Councilmember Gruel's comment. Yesterday was wonderful, they had all the custodians at two o'clock for Custodian Appreciation Day, and I think it is absolutely great that Dennis Zein brought you in, Odell, and I wanted to not give you a resolution, but I have two pins for you.
All right, Tom.
What do they say?
They're, uh, keep kids safe. Vote for anybody but Holden.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I'd like to call up Councilmember Garcetti.
Councilmember colleagues, I've invited folks to join me, so I know Councilmember Laban's going to join me, Councilmember Holden, Han, Gruel, Mr. Weiss, you're most, more than welcome to join us, but I, I think Mr. Reyes has to stay up there to make sure we still have a chair for this meeting. It gives me great joy, we were just, I'll try to make this a good transition, we were just talking about folks that clean up. Well, we have some more folks here to honor today who have cleaned up. The world champion, Los Angeles Galaxy, please give the world champions a hand and welcome them. Our city, city of angels, city of champions welcomes yet another champion team. It has been a great year for Los Angeles. We had the Lakers, we had the Sparks, we'll still claim the Angels while we're at it, but more than anything else, this is a city of soccer. This is a city whose number-one sport, in terms of what the kids play, what our communities play, is soccer. It's football. And we know that the Galaxy have come so close, so many times, three times, they made it into the championships, the finals, and had to go away unfortunately without the trophy. But this year, they did it. On any given weekend in Los Angeles, at any given park in this great city, we can find thousands of children, teenagers, and adults playing and living soccer. Los Angeles is one of the meccas for soccer in the United States, and now our team, the Los Angeles Galaxy, has honored us with a national championship. It's an honor for me to recognize the leadership the Galaxy team has taken in bringing soccer to the limelight here. Before presenting a symbol of our appreciation with a certificate and the rest of the council here, I would like to have a representative of one of our local soccer leagues say a few words in one second. Paco Serrano, who's one of the coordinators of the Anawak Youth Soccer Association. Anawak involves over one thousand young people in soccer. They are preparing for the future, many Pescadito Ruizes, and I think we should be proud that the Galaxy had the MVP this year with El Pescadito himself, Carlos Ruiz, the future Kobe Joneses, as well as many other future stars right there in our community. Let me just say something briefly in Spanish, and then I'll turn the microphone over to Paco and to my colleagues before we honor the Galaxy. Buenos dias. No es un secreto que el futbol soccer es el deporte favorito en Los Angeles. En cualquier fin de semana, en cualquier parque de esta gran ciudad, nos encontramos con miles de niños, jóvenes y adultos que juegan y viven el futbol. Los Angeles es uno de los meccas de futbol soccer en Estados Unidos, y ahora nuestro equipo, El Galaxy, nos honra con su compa- acompañato nacional y su presencia hoy en la cámara de consejo. I also want to say one thing about the Galaxy, is they are truly a Los Angeles team, an international team. When you look, they've got players from Venezuela, from Guatemala, from El Salvador, from Mexico, from New Zealand, from the United States. They've just acquired a player from Korea as well, who's going to be coming here next year, and they represent what is great about this city. So I'm going to ask Paco to come forward, say a word, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues before we honor the Galaxy. And I have to say also for the record, we expected more players here. We are blessed to have the ones that are here, but one of the planes that was due to land couldn't land because of this unseasonable weather, so we are here in all of their honors. But first, Paco, if you'd like to say a few words on behalf of Anawak and all the great players of soccer in Los Angeles.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Francisco Serrano. Soy el coordinador general de la Liga de Fútbol Anáhuac. Queremos felicitar junto con los niños del equipo Galaxy, al equipo Galaxy por su campeonato y darles las gracias al concejal Eric Garcetti por su invitación. Gracias.
Councilmember Gruel.
Well, I just want to add my congratulations to Galaxy. And you're right, soccer is everywhere in our city, and it is an exciting game for so many of our young people, women and men, which is a nice thing, and girls and boys in Los Angeles. So just want to congratulate as well the Galaxy team and making us all proud here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Congratulations, team, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for hosting this terrific event. I'm just trying to add it up. When one year we have baseball, basketball, and soccer world championships in the same metropolitan area, that's pretty extraordinary. I don't know how you could do, but that's a three-peat in one year. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate Galaxy on a terrific championship. You really made us proud. You, you got lost a little bit there in the limelight, but we are so excited about you and proud, and you have done more, in my opinion, to give girls and boys all over at Los Angeles a dream that they too can one day compete on a champ- championship team. I just opened six new soccer fields in San Pedro called the Field of Dreams. We have more young girls and boys that are playing soccer than any other sport in the harbor area, and we never have enough soccer fields. So congratulations and thanks for giving every girl and boy in Los Angeles a role model and something to be excited about. Congratulations.
Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I just want to join my colleagues in congratulating the Galaxy team for being the champions of soccer here in the U.S. It's a tough game, very competitive, high-spirited, and those individuals who follow the sport of soccer loves the game even more than baseball and football and basketball. Soccer, they love, in some countries, a lot of folks die at those games. So, but that's how much they love it, especially when their team don't win. So I must tell you, I gave you a chance, you still, you wanted to go last. You know, I used to go last, but not you last. In any case, I played the game of soccer long before these individuals were born, even their parents. And back in New Jersey, it was our number-one sport in junior high school and in high school. And tough, as I said, competitive, as I know it to be. I got kicked in the chins a few times, shins, and that's when I gave up the game, and I want to congratulate these guys for carrying on, because it is a tough game. Congratulations once again for your victory.
Let's hear it for the great striker, Nate Holden. Next, Tom Laban.
Thank you. I wanted to be a little more positive than Nate was there, but Nate's very positive because he brought down the, the team from the Korean team and their fans when they had that World Cup fever here, and there was so much excitement, so all this excitement around soccer. But it's an absolutely wonderful game that runs for time, and there's no timeouts, which is so interesting. But I want to salute the Galaxy, but I also want to salute the coaches and salute the trainers and the whole team, everybody around who put the team on the field that led to the championship, and wish them well. They carried the great name of Los Angeles to the heights of their league, so they're very worthy of this honor. And Mr. Garcetti, thanks for bringing them in and acceding the appointment of soccer fields. We need more fields for, for dreams of players to play, girls and boys, men and women, everybody to play on fields. But congratulations to the Los Angeles Galaxy world champions.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I just want to congratulate the Galaxy for being that role model. I remember when Anawak, back six years ago, they were all parents just struggling to find a place to play, and now we have our dream of playing in the Taylor Yards for soccer. We have other places in the city, hopefully parts of the cornfield, but the bottom line here is without the Galaxy, the young people won't have those role models. I want to thank you for being that particular presence in our community, and thanks to the parents of Anawak for all the great things. Gracias por su trabajo, por su apoyo para nuestros niños en el futuro, y el Galaxy por todo lo que han demostrado, que tenemos héroes para poder seguir en el futuro, y gracias por todo el trabajo que han hecho para nuestra ciudad y por ser los campeones. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes. Let me just say the names of the team before we invite Ralph Perez, one of the coaches up here, to, to say something. The head coach, Siggy Schmidt, who hails from Germany, general manager Doug Hamilton, the players, goalkeepers Kevin Hartman, Matt Reese, defenders Danny Kaliff, Adam Frye, Ezra Hendrickson, Alexi Lalas, which, or Lealas, excuse me, which many of us will remember from the Olympics, Tyrone Marshall, midfielders Alex Benard, Mauricio Cienfuegos, Simon Elliott, Kobe Jones, Jesús Ochoa, Peter Vaganas, who's here today, Sasha Victorine, forwards Chris Albright, Isaiah Bardales Jr., Gavin Glinton, who is also here today, Hercules Gomez, Alejandro Moreno, who joins us as well, Brian Mullen, Carlos Ruiz, who was
(Applause).
(Applause).
Transportation Department has chosen to take the specific paragraph in the transportation ordinance out of context, taking the middle of the sentence out. If you have, in fact, read the determination by the Transportation Department, you'll see half of a sentence, then dot, 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 and then the rest of the sentence. Well, the section that was taken out of the ordinance in this letter by the Transportation Department, which is dated March 29th of 2002, specifically what it gives leeway is that the city can determine if a project, if a project is allowed to receive in lieu credits, which, which of the improvements, traffic improvements could qualify them, qualify for them. It doesn't actually give the Transportation Department the ability to simply determine that anything, any project is entitled to be transferred in lieu credits, especially since the development agreement passed in 1986 prohibits the Hughes Entertainment Center from receiving a transfer of in lieu credits.
Sir, I-
That's the crux of our appeal.
You're doing a very good job of making your point.
So I urge you to grant the appeal and, and live up to the court's judgment of last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Chair recognizes Mr. Burton.
Mr. Burton?
Yes, members of the council, the committee chair followed the advice of the city attorney, which advised that such a transfer was not only legal but appropriate. The language this gentleman, the appellant referring to was one intended so that the credits would not be used for Playa Vista, which they are not. They are used entirely within this particular project. So I would move that the appeal be denied and the committee report be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 11, called special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss.
Two reports on one file.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I would move the Budget Committee report, but I want to thank Mr. Reyes, because I think this was your motion initially, Mr. Reyes. And the differences, I understand, between the Budget Committee report and the Transportation Committee report have to do with sort of the bureaucratic nature of the positions. What happened when, this is about preferential parking, and when these preferential parking positions got to the Budget Committee, the C A O recommended against doing it. And those of us on the Budget Committee said, no, wait a second. You can tell us that this is, it would be penny wise not to spend this money right now, but this is a need that our neighborhoods are just crying out for right now in the city, across the city. I would guess that most council offices are getting phone calls. The phones are ringing off the hook from people who want their applications processed, who want new opportunities for preferential parking in their communities. The city is not acting on it right now. And so Ms. Hahn, I remember we talked about this at Budget, and we all agreed, I think this, this motion was seconded, third, fourth, and fifth at Budget, to overrule what the C A O wanted to do, to spend the money to get people there right now, processing these applications, because our neighborhoods are choking under the increased burdens of traffic and development in the city. And we're also going to look at, I know there's a motion out there about possibly raising the fines for violations of this ordinance, which might be a good idea, but for now, the people, I mean, you couldn't hear the people more loudly and more clearly, let's get the positions in. And so I'd move the Budget and Finance report, which is consistent with the Transportation report, but probably a better report for, as I say, bureaucratic reasons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. One of the critical issues here, and it's unfortunate, and it's really, it's a real sad statement, but the fact is, when we have big events in, in the venues like we have in downtown, and you have cars parking in front of neighborhoods, in terms of, in front of people's homes in these neighborhoods that are adjacent to these large venues, we have a parking issue, and people can't literally even park in front of their home, especially when they don't have a driveway. But compounding that is this problem we have, where we have these international prostitution rings coming in and parking their vehicles in front of businesses, in front of people's homes, in front of apartments, and doing this unacceptable, we shouldn't be tolerating this kind of conduct and this kind of behavior in our neighborhoods. And it's because we allow people to park for many hours, and we don't have a way to police it. Now, we're very short on our police powers in terms of actual bodies being in, in the uniform. So these areas are suffering at many levels, but more are suffering than others because of this blight, this problem of prostitution in areas, where people are literally parking in front of these homes and apartments and businesses, when they should be moving on or not there at all. So I ask for your support and find other, and this is another method that we can have to eliminate these problems. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I strongly support this. This is real important. We have a department that needs help. Parking and traffic are the two greatest issues, and this small complement will help alleviate some of the problems. And I think it's ironic today that Alan Rifkin here from the Department of Transportation is here, as well as a class from Fairfax High School in government. And I wanted to, at the same time, ask Alan, a graduate of Fairfax, and Fairfax High to stand and be recognized. Here's one of our senior transportation engineers who's helping out on the problem, and here's the future leaders of Los Angeles dealing with traffic and parking and all the other situations. Welcome, Fairfax High, and welcome, Alan Rifkin. Thank you, Mr. President. I support it.
Mr. Holden.
I understand, Mr. Weiss, you said, let's adopt the Transportation Committee report? Was there another, Budget Committee, which I don't have in front of me? Was that handed out before? Well, anyway, the position is designed to provide additional personnel for permit parking. I think is that the intent, will the department come up and answer some questions, please? Department of Transportation.
Is the department here?
Alan Rifkin, he was introduced.
Representatives of the department, if not?
You can just answer why you think these positions are needed, if, if at all. You can sit at the table. Oh, well, they moved it around.
Alan Willis from the Department of Transportation Office of Parking Management. The reason they're needed is, since July 1st, when these positions were eliminated, I have received over 160 requests for new preferential parking districts and modifications to existing districts. That's why they're needed.
Mr. President, on this subject matter, and for the benefit of the council persons, apparently preferential parking is going to be the new trend for the city of Los Angeles. And that's all over the city, block by block. That's what it appears, and you're just getting started. Now, we considered the impact of the initial preferential parking permit that was issued. Initially, they were issued in West L.A. because they were building a lot of high-rise buildings, and the employees were in, in the area, parking, taking up parking from the residents in the area. And so it was to be temporary initially, but it got so good that you got the permit parking in one location, then it impacted the next block, and the next block, and the next block, and so on. And now, this is going to be a method of really shutting down the businesses in the area. They can't operate either. We, we stagger the times, I think, in, in Mr. Labange's district, where they can park at certain times and give, alleviate the, the impact there for the business adjacent to the area. I think that this is something you have to look at more seriously. In time, when you get a negative impact, negative response, the effect will be negative, and the people will be coming in saying, I really didn't want that on my block, and we're giving out too many citations. It's another money-raising venture. So I'm just putting it on the table for the consideration. That's what's anticipated. With these personnel, all those requests for, for permit parking, this is what's likely to happen. In my district, I've been telling them, no, it's going to be a negative impact, hold off, don't jump the gun, let's wait. And I don't think I've asked for more than one in the past 16 years, and that was temporary as a result of the earthquake and the Kaiser Hospital there, where the employees had to park. But the hospital paid for the parking permits. So this can get out of control, appearing, apparently it's about to do just that. Any comments you want to make on it?
The only comment I'd like to make is that we, in processing these, are mindful of the council policy to try to mitigate any adverse impact on adjacent businesses in the parking restrictions that we recommend and for adoption in the residential areas. And so that's why, in a lot of cases, we do allow two-hour parking in these residential areas during business hours. And so we do balance the needs of the businesses with the needs of the residents when we propose parking restrictions.
Which is a pretty good policy.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
For the record, the Transportation Committee report is received and filed.
Correct.
Mr. President, item number 20 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Before we begin with discussion, we do have some speaker cards on item 20. Council calls forward Shelley, is it Luce or Lucy, Sheila Berman, Steve Weston, Gordon Merly, and others, as we proceed with the public hearing on this item.
Good morning, council members. I'm Shelley Luce. I'm staff scientist at Heal the Bay. And Heal the Bay has worked to study, protect, and restore Malibu Creek watershed for many years now. We're very concerned about the impact of this development on the watershed. The supplemental E I R that was approved by Ventura County staff is not adequate, because it does not fully disclose and mitigate the problems this development will cause in the watershed. Heal the Bay has submitted detailed comments and asked very specific questions on this environmental document, but we have never received sufficient answers from Washington Mutual or their consultants. We're very concerned about water quality impacts that remain unaddressed, and mitigation that, to this day, remains vague and unenforceable. We are also concerned about Washington Mutual's plans to withdraw water from a well that is contaminated by perchlorate without first checking where the contamination is coming from, how much is there, and what other contaminants may be associated with it. We and other groups have made these concerns very clear to the county through testimony and written comments. We believe that Ventura County must allow time for the responsible government agencies who are looking out for public health and the environment to review the documents fully, as those agencies have requested of the county. We agree with Mr. Zine that the studies and mitigation being relied upon for this project are inadequate, and we support Mr. Zine's motion, and we urge the council to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Berman.
Good morning, council members. I'm Sheila Berman, Executive Director of Rally to Save Amundson Ranch. And as you remember, probably from the Madrid Theater, we represent thousands of individuals in L.A. and Ventura County who are opposed to this development. Our co-chairs, campaign co-chairs are Rob Reiner and Chris Albrecht. And we have the support, and, and our coalition consists of the West, Woodland Hills Homeowners Association, the West Valley Community Coalition, the West Hills Neighborhood Council, Woodland Hills Neighborhood Council, and as you heard, Heal the Bay, Sierra Club, and N R D C. I'm here to ask you to support Councilman Zine's motion to, to approve going ahead and suing if Ventura County does approve this project. We have gone through numerous hearings in Ventura County, and I have to say, I'm glad to be here today in L.A. because we haven't been heard in Ventura County. And I know that we will be heard here in this council chamber. You have gotten a letter from the attorneys for Washington Mutual that, that said that they're providing 25% affordable housing. Let me tell you, that's not true. The truth is, is that of that 25%, half of that are single, are these ancillary units in guest, that are guest quarters in luxury homes. Now, in an urban area, these might be rented out, but in a suburban area like Amundson Ranch, these will not be rented. So half of their affordable housing is not really affordable housing. So we're talking about smoke and mirrors.
I can ask some-
Again, I just wanted also to say, we especially appreciate you, Mr. Holden, who, at the Madrid Theater, offered to, to the motion at that time to go ahead and sue. And so now we're asking all of you to support Dennis Zine in this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Weston, followed by Gordon Merly, Matthew Hayden, Bonnie Clay, and Christina Walsh.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Steve Weston, Attorney for Washington Mutual and the Amundson Land Company. Thank you for hearing me today. I know most of you, not one of you, have failed to recognize how serious our housing crisis is. You've also recognized, I think, that the city cannot solve this housing crisis by itself. And I would also point out that I know of no company greater than Washington Mutual who has done more in each of your communities to assist in the housing effort. Indeed, I challenge you, and each of you, to identify any company that has been more committed to quality housing and to protection of the environment than Washington Mutual. And yet, you question this, by this motion here today, Washington Mutual's corporate responsibility in supporting and developing the Amundson Ranch. This is after the delivery of more than 10,000 acres of open space, as was promised by Washington Mutual, and after Washington Mutual promised and did accept one of the most comprehensive environmental protection programs this region has ever seen. If I cannot convince you today to reject this motion, I urge you to defer it. You don't have the final information on this supplemental impact report. The political process in Ventura County has yet to begin. There have been no hearings before the Planning Commission, no hearings before the Board of Supervisors. There are 6,000 pages of responses to comments that ought to be carefully analyzed. I would urge you that this motion is premature. I would urge you to recognize that Washington Mutual supports this project because it's a good, environmentally sensitive, smart growth project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Merly.
Yes, Gordon Merly, President of San Fernando Valley Federation of Homeowners. We're here to support Mr. Zine's motion, simply because what was just said by Washington Mutual, they have not done anything to mitigate it, nor has Ventura County done anything to take care of the costs. All of the burdens will fall on the citizens of the city of L.A. and Los Angeles County. To say it's all about affordable housing, you don't destroy Malibu Canyon, you don't overburden the streets of Los Angeles and let the taxpayers pick up to repair and try to solve the problems that this will create while nobody can enter and, and drive through their territory. So we think Mr. Zine is right, and others before him have said the same thing. So we would ask you to support Councilman Zine's position, because it makes good business sense for the city of Los Angeles until Washington Mutual decides to do an honest, fully mitigated E I R. We will be the ones in Los Angeles City and County that will perpetuity pay for all the problems that this will create as it's presently designed. Thank you.
Matthew Hayden.
Good morning, council members. My name is Matthew Hayden. I'm here representing the city of Calabasas and would like to deliver a message from the mayor, Leslie Devine. The city of Calabasas has been objecting to the Amundson Ranch project since 1991 in every way possible and at great expense to our small population. We have spoken out at each and every hearing held on the development by Ventura County, the State Fish and Game, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and more. We believe we have laid a, a clear and compelling administrative record that supports your concerns as brought forth by Councilmember Zine. There's no clear good neighbor policy that mandates that regional issues be fully considered and mitigated, and that leaves one jurisdiction free to place all impacts on a neighboring jurisdiction. Unfortunately, Ventura County decision-makers are free to ignore environmental and infrastructure issues by using overriding considerations. The over 6,000 pages of testimony provided to Ventura County's ERC Committee probably raised all of the issues regarding the Amundson Ranch inadequate S C I R. However, three issues stand out as having the most inadequate responses. Traffic projections are so out of date that the decision-makers will not have realistic information. Expert traffic engineers testifying on behalf of the city of Calabasas at both Ventura's ERC Committee and last year's State Assembly hearing conducted by Assemblymember Fran Pavly clearly set out the details of the huge infrastructure problem, including the need for up-to-date statistics. Cultural resource issues have also received short shrift from Ventura. There are multiple Native American sacred sites and registered archaeological sites on the Amundson Ranch, yet no protection or provisions for future care of the sites have been specified. The updated E I R did not even include these sites, and the 10-year-old E I R provided no genuine protections. Finally, water quality standards cannot be met by this development plan. As the author of the Clean Water Act began the letter from Congressman Henry Waxman to the Ventura ERC, he went on to explain that the watershed, or the Malibu watershed's deficiencies in, in the development plan. Testimony from the L.A. Regional Water Quality Control Board and Heal the Bay further detail the environmental destruction and water degradation the Amundson Ranch project would bring upon two downstream cities, Calabasas and Malibu, the state parklands, and all the way through the Santa Monica Mountains to Malibu Lagoon and Surf Rider Beach. All of the above is meant to encourage you to become actively involved in this project's outrages, and thank you and your council for attention to this matter. We would be happy to provide you with any copies of any of the information that we have at our disposal, and be willing to work with you in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bonnie Clay, followed by Christina Walsh, Janice Lee, Victor Franco Jr.
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Clay, and I'm a 32-year resident of the San Fernando Valley in West Hills. And in 1995, I was diagnosed with bladder cancer. And I found out that my neighborhood has a 50% higher rate of bladder cancer in studies done by the Department of Health in 1978 to 1982, and another study in 1983 to 1987. And I did leave excerpts of the study, which shows the whole area, all the census tracts adjoining Ventura County, close to Rockadine, have higher rates of leukemia, Hodgkin's, and bladder cancer. And I just like, would like you all to be aware of the possible danger for Amundson Ranch to be disturbing the soil and to be pumping groundwater with perchlorate in it. And currently, UCLA is doing an update on this cancer study from the Cancer Registry, and we're waiting to see what the present day shows for rates of cancer in the area. And I, I do support Councilman Zine's proposal, and I think a lot more study needs to be done on the contamination issue. Thank you.
Ms. Walsh.
My name is Christina Walsh, and I sit on the, the board of the West Hills Property Owners Association. And we would just like to say that we support this motion wholeheartedly. One of the things, as we've been testifying at each of these hearings over the Amundson Ranch project that we've, we've heard about, is the fact that the, the studies done to date, the, the tests done on soil, for example, they did six soil samples over the course of 3,200 acres. And of those, they actually used Rockadine, where there was a nuclear meltdown, as their background zero level. And they still found results on radionuclides higher than background, higher than Rockadine on Amundson Ranch. Their summary in this D S, I can't even keep up with the S E I R, the summary states that it was found to be clean, whereas the details show that they found results. They found perchlorate, they found dioxins, they found perchlorate at levels seven times higher than what is actionable. Simi Valley is known to be one of the highest rates of autism in the United States. Simi Valley also has perchlorate in their wells, above levels that are actionable. That is something that has been connected. And here we are, right next door, and it's just very, very concerning. So we just want to, again, reiterate our support for this motion, and that we just want proper testing to be done. At every point, they have tried to say, we don't need to test anymore. And, and we believe that that's because they know what they will find. And when we stir it up and begin grading to the point where you could literally fill 55 rose bowls of soil, and that soil is potentially contaminated, and we will be breathing that, it's just, it's just too dangerous to, to move forward. So again, we'd like to thank this council and, and show our support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Janice Lee, followed by Victor Franco Jr.
Good morning, President Padilla and honorable counsel. I am Janice Lee. I'm a City Council member with the city of Calabasas and a former mayor. I'm here this morning on behalf of my city and the citizens of my community in support of the motion being brought forward this morning by Councilman Dennis Zine. You and your constituents deserve to know what the true impacts of the Amundson Ranch project will be on the city of Los Angeles. Ventura County's current supplemental environmental impact report does not provide that information. Ignoring the serious concerns of Los Angeles, Ventura County has chosen instead to fast-track this project to the County Board of Supervisors for approval. Such an approval would produce enormous impacts, which could cost billions, with a "B," of dollars to Los Angeles in lost commerce, health impacts, depleted public services, and mitigations for traffic impacts. At a time when our cities face critical fiscal constraints and are having to make difficult budget decisions that directly affect our citizens, Ventura County's proposed new city specifically states that it will use Los Angeles police, fire, paramedic, and hospital emergency care services for years and possibly decades, instead of providing its own services. The public and responsible agencies continue to ask for a current traffic study, but are being denied this critical information. Instead, Ventura County continues to rely on an outdated traffic study done over a decade ago, leaving the true cost of traffic impacts to be borne by Los Angeles citizens alone. Ventura County's traffic projections in 1992 underestimated 45,000 daily car trips, which will be solely dependent on Los Angeles city and county streets for access. Such traffic impacts will cost Los Angeles taxpayers untold billions, not only from the lost commerce with freeway gridlock, but especially impacting small businesses and working-class commuters. Ironically, the project is being pushed forward by Washington Mutual, a wealthy banking interest based in Seattle, Washington. CEO Kerry Killinger earned more than $6 million last year alone in annual salary bonuses and incentives, but defends this project's proposal to allocate only half of his salary as adequate mitigation for traffic impacts of this entire proposed massive new city upon all of the residents of Los Angeles in perpetuity. The California Legislative Council has stated that development agreements cannot supersede SEQA. Yet Ventura County is fast-tracking this project under a development agreement with Washington Mutual, which continues to defy the intent of SEQA at the expense of public participation and true disclosure of the facts to responsible agencies. Had Ventura County held their hearing today, no public, no public testimony or responsible agencies would have been allowed to produce any information or objection, because this morning, the C H P shut down the 101 freeway on the Santa Clara Bridge heading to the City Hall in Ventura County. It is telling that the city of Calabasas believes the highest and best use of Amundson Ranch remains the acquisition of it into the public trust. Governor Davis has expressed interest in such an acquisition, supported by his Secretary of Natural Resources, Mary Nichols. Representatives locally, statewide, and federal have unified in pursuing such an acquisition because we all recognize the importance of this rare, valuable watershed to our people and to our economy. With the recent passage of Proposition 50, $300 million in funding for park-related projects to benefit Los Angeles citizens, such as an acquisition of Amundson Ranch, makes this an acquisition that is possible. I commend this council for recognizing earlier this morning the Native Americans, because Amundson Ranch itself is rich in Native American heritage and sacred sites that are slated for destruction forever by this development. In the- In the critical weeks ahead, this project still could be approved, leaving unanswered the long list of significant questions concerning its true impacts and the cost to the citizens of Los Angeles. The City of Calabasas urges your unanimous vote in support of this motion, because if the project's inadequate environmental document is prematurely approved, the citizens of Los Angeles will have no other immediate recourse. The City of Calabasas appreciates your earnest efforts in the past and stands ready and willing to do all in our power to assist our neighboring city of Los Angeles. We will cooperate with your city in utilizing all of the resources at our disposal to ensure that all of our citizens are protected. The Calabasas City Council supports the motion being proposed by Councilman Dennis Zine, and we urge you to vote unanimously in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Victor Franco Jr.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Victor Franco Jr. I'm the direct, or excuse me, Vice President of Government Affairs for Central City Association. CCA is a 300-member business advocacy association here in downtown Los Angeles. Our 300 members employ over 250,000 people here in the Los Angeles region. We are in strong support of the Amundson Ranch project in Ventura County. To say that this project has been studied is an understatement. This project has been studied, I believe, more than any other project in history. And after all this study, the process is still not complete. Several more hearings, advisory meetings have not yet occurred. The City of Los Angeles will have plenty of opportunity to act on this project. To act now or give direction now is premature at best. We ask that you allow for the process to continue before taking an action on the Amundson Ranch. We ask for your vote in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This closes the public hearing on Item Number 20. Members, I'll now recognize Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Weiss, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Brunson, and Ms. Perry. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, and I want to first thank those here today, Hill of Bay, Sheila Berman, Janice Lee, Gordon Merly, and the others that spoke on this matter. I appreciate you fighting the traffic and the weather conditions to be down here for this hearing. I also want to recognize the elected officials who are opposed to this project, the congressman from the area, the state senator from the area, the assembly member from the area, Supervisor Zevio Roslosky, Mayor Hahn, Mayor of Los Angeles, myself, as well as the neighboring cities of Calabasas. I remember a meeting not too long ago at El Camino High School, where there were over 500 people speaking in opposition to the Amundson Ranch project. There was one voice that spoke in support of it, and that's the voice of the lobbyists, the lobbyists that are being paid to push the project through. When you have the outpoint of a community, not only at El Camino High School, but at the Madrid Theater, which we had our council meeting, and we had an overflow crowd of individuals who were there, one after another, speaking against this project, and then someone said, "There are some elected representatives who support the project." And I asked, "Who are those elected representatives? Were there people out in other surrounding areas, Montebello, Bell, Hawthorne, some of the other communities, but nowhere in the vicinity of this project?" And I asked Mr. Weston, "Where you reside, Mr. Weston?" I asked the CCA, "Where you reside? You don't fight the Ventura Freeway every day like the rest of us. You don't have to tolerate the miserable traffic conditions every single day. And Proposition 50 may give us the parkland that we need for that area." When you talk about affordable housing, 774 units is what they state in their document they'll provide affordable housing. The average home in the southwest San Fernando Valley is selling for over $325,000. And I question what their definition of affordable housing is for those 774 units. When you look at the 10,000 acres they're donating back, the only reason they're giving that back is so they don't have traffic impact on the surrounding communities. So they'll push it onto Victory Boulevard, so they'll push it into the west San Fernando Valley. That's the reason why they want to donate 10,000 acres, not because of the goodness of their heart, it's because they don't want to have these other communities fight them, but these other communities are fighting them, as we're going to fight them. This is simply a matter of corporate greed. Washington Mutual has the land, they want to destroy the environment, they want to tell the San Fernando Valley, "You don't count." They want to have nothing but more money in their pockets, so they can then buy more and more land and tear down more and more mountains. But when it comes to pristine land in this city, it's virtually gone, other than Griffith Park. And when you look at the southwest San Fernando Valley, the people that voted for secession and overwhelming numbers, we need to send them a message that we do care about their quality of life, that we do want to assist them, that we will fight for them. The mayor has sent a letter out to each and every one of you. I've sent a letter out to each and every one of you urging your support. And what we're doing is preparing our city attorney to have the ammunition ready in the event it's approved by Ventura County. That's all it's going to do. So I urge you, for the decency of humanity, if nothing else, and to keep me out of my tent that I will plant there at Victory and Valley Circle, in the event I have to do that to stop the bulldozers from going through, that we support this motion to provide our city attorney the opportunity to fight. For all residents of the San Fernando Valley, fight for them to maintain some tranquility and some environment of reasonableness. And I urge my colleagues to vote for this motion. This is probably the most critical issue in my district. In fact, I don't know of any other issue in my district that is more important to the people of the southwest San Fernando Valley, or those folks that ride the Ventura Freeway every single day. Janice Lee came out from Calabasas, and it took her almost two hours to get here, almost two hours to get from Calabasas to City Hall. We don't need the project, we need parkland out there. I thank you, and I know my time is up, but I'm very passionate about this, because this is a matter of quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Wow. Wow. The decency of humanity pitch, that got me. I will stand with you, Mr. Zine, and I applaud your passion on this issue. And I also want to applaud, I mean, this is, it is a very controversial matter, but it is a matter where there are very effective and persuasive advocates on both sides. I see Mr. Griffin and Ms. Berman here. Mr. Weston has made an excellent presentation, and there are a lot of, there are a lot of good points to be made here. But let me just, let me just say one thing, because I think, I think Mr. Zine encapsulated the substantive reasons for the vote quite well. A lot is being made, in fact, far too much is being made over what did the election this week mean, and what do the West Valley votes mean, and what do the East Valley votes mean, and what it means is the city's going to stay together, and let's move on. But what is happening here, right under the noses of apparently a number of voters who wanted to break the city up, is Mr. Zine is fighting to keep the city together, Mr. Zine is fighting for the interests of the West Valley, and every single elected official that I can think of, and I imagine every or nearly every member of this council is going to join with him and his West Valley residents, as the mayor has already done, and support this motion to fight this project. If ever there were an example of how we are stronger together and how we can do more together, this is that issue, where you have what, from the election results this week, you could term as arguably more conservative neighborhoods in the West Valley, joining together with the environmental community, with Mr. Griffin, Ms. Berman, we heard from Hill of Bay, environmentalists throughout the city, and people on the west side of the central city as well. This is an example of what we are about as a city, and I think, for that reason, the fact that we're taking this vote this Friday, a couple days after this mixed message was sent in the valley, I think it's very significant. And so I urge everybody to join with Mr. Zine for decency, justice, and everything else you talked about, Mr. Zine. Oh, and humanity, yeah.
Ms. Galanter.
Hal just told me not to forget the flag on motherhood. Yes, thank you. Motherhood, where's the motherhood? The, I actually have a somewhat different point of view. I want to remind you all that we have a very severe housing shortage throughout Southern California. We have a shortage of all kinds of housing. This is not all affordable housing by any means, but one of the reasons that the shortage of affordable housing is getting worse is that as we don't provide for more housing for higher-income people, they are buying up neighborhoods that used to be inhabited by working people, and removing those neighborhoods from the supply of ordinary people's housing, regular people's housing. I don't want to say this is a perfect project, but this project is at a stage where I believe, in this moment in our history, given the housing shortage that we have, the responsible thing to do is figure out how to make it a good project, if you think it is not a good project today. I see you shaking your head. This is America, we're still allowed to disagree here. And I respectfully disagree. I think the issue, many of the environmental issues that have been raised are legitimate issues, which should be discussed. But I believe, given the state this project is in, in the process, the appropriate way to do that, and I commend Mr. Zine for the way he's framed this motion. He says, "Request the city attorney to sue if Ventura County approves it in its current state or without significant meaningful traffic, water, and pollution studies, et cetera." Now, to decide whether the significant, the studies on traffic, water, and pollution studies are significant, seems to me this ought to be reviewed by our planning committee and perhaps by our transportation committee, because unquestionably, the 101 freeway and the impacts on surrounding streets are important to us. But I think that 10,000 acres of open space, which is roughly three times the size of LAX, ought to be enough for anybody, even movie stars. And frankly, the housing shortage is not going to get solved if we say no to every big project. You may say, somebody will say, "Well, what about in your district? Well, when I had a big open space in my district and a project, I took the same position." We have a serious housing problem here. We cannot solve it by creating trust funds alone. We have to have housing being built. And if we are going to do the responsible thing and protect the quality of life for everybody, we cannot go around saying no to everything just because it's a popular position. I am not going to support this motion today. I would be happy to support sending it to committee. I would like to know if our planning committee and our transportation committee feel, after reviewing the EIR, that the, there are specific things that need to be changed, and I'd like to know what it is we specifically want to change, and I might very well support that. But I am certainly not going to say that the West Valley should have yet more open space. That is not where the biggest shortage of open space is. And I believe that if the, if 10,000 acres isn't enough for you, then you really have a problem, and I don't think the City of L.A. can solve it for you. And I object to having my public money spent on buying more land, where we can get 10,000 acres of it without having to spend public money, just as I have the same problem with the private project in my former district. If you have money to spend for parkland, I've got plenty of places in my new district that could use it.
Mr. Brunson.
This is a very complicated issue. It isn't just as simple as you've heard it. First of all, if parkland is purchased, it won't even be in our county, it'll be in Ventura County. So you'd be asking people from Los Angeles or LA County to purchase land that would be, that would be in Ventura County, if that, if that was the course. Now, as far as, as far as the EIR is concerned, this is the comment period, it's been circulated. And I have a lot of concerns, as Mr. Zine does. They're not about all the, some of the environmental issues that I've heard about, the water and about this. I think those are no different than they are basically throughout our area. What I do have concern about is the impact that the traffic that this has generated is going to do to our freeways and our streets, to Victory Boulevard, for one thing, and to the San Fernando Valley. I also have another very serious problem. We get the impact, they get the money, the revenue, from the, from the center. And that's something that hasn't been addressed yet. If anything we were going to sue for, perhaps that should be it. I'm very serious now. They had a similar situation between Long Beach and Lakeview, and they had a shopping center which was going to go in on the edge of Long Beach in the city of Lakeview. Well, they finally wound up in litigation, they finally wound up with a settlement, and they wound up with a division of the sales tax proceeds that came from that center. Now, I think that is historic and precedent-setting, and I think it has some merit here. Now, I'm not suggesting that this, this project should be approved as it is. I think that we would be in a very poor position trying to defend a lawsuit unless we come up with some very, very strong information and failure to mitigate the EIR. I also believe that this should go to committee. I don't think it should be acted on today, in all due respect, Zine, and I do support you. But I think the proper way to beat this thing, if we're going to beat it, or modify it, or make sure that the impacts are mitigated, is to send this to the appropriate committees. You have to prepare a case. The way the case is prepared is you have to attack the EIR on where it fails to mitigate. The only way that Ventura County can approve the EIR on this project without mitigating all the impact, correct me if I'm wrong, is to find that there's an overriding need, public need, for this project. I think they'll have difficulty in doing that without the proper mitigations, and I think that's where we have to, we have to go. And I would suggest, I'm going to make, I'm going to move that this go to a number of committees. I'm going to move that it goes to planning committee, I'm going to move it goes to transportation and to the environmental committee. I think those are the three committees that are most proficient in handling this. We ask those departments to prepare to each look at the EIR and look at the plan, and prepare what they believe to be the needed mitigations that will be necessary, so that the, the traffic impacts and other impacts of this project will be mitigated. And when we have done that, then's the time to bring it back. If the Ventura County approves the EIR as it is now, and we can at that time join with the county, I'm sure the county will have some action on that, I'm sure some of the citizen groups will have some of that. I don't believe that now is the time to make a declaration. I think now is the time for us to look, in fact, I think we impact our ability to challenge the EIR. If we, if we, can I, I won't press my button again, if you just give me another second. I just, I think that if we, if we challenge the EIR at this, if we challenge and declare we're going to file a lawsuit no matter what, before we've listed our objections and what we think is necessary, I think we hurt our cause. So I'm going to move that we send those, these committees, that we come back with a full report, and at that time, we make a determination of what the council action should be.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to ask a question of the city attorney about the language in the motion and whether this request by Mr. Zine can automatically occur prior to the certification of the supplemental EIR by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, and what language you have in, or your advice to address that concern.
About whether the, well, first, I guess I should identify myself. Keith Pritzker, Deputy City Attorney. This motion is conditional. Councilmember Galanter read that language on the, at the end of the motion. I would recommend that one slight modification be made if the council's going to approve this, which is, after the reference to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, that we add the words, "Approve the track map and certify the EIR." As we all know, the matter would not be ripe for a suit unless there's that approval as well as the certification. It seems pretty clear that those two things are very likely to happen at the same time, but out of an abundance of caution, that would be my one suggestion. Otherwise, I would simply reiterate what has already been stated, which is that this is conditional on whether the changes that have already been requested by city staff through the city attorney's office to the county of Ventura are made, and so far, those changes have not been made.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I think it's important that we understand the valid experience of our, of our colleagues, who've been through different battles and different wars. I believe that what Councilmember Brunson is saying, there's a lot of bearing to that in terms of how we understand these impacts and these issues, both from a planning and transportation point of view. The qualifying language that you're describing, Mr. Pritzker, gives us in terms of how we understand these impacts and these issues, both from a planning and transportation point of view. The qualifying language that, that you're describing, Mr. Pritzker, gives us some flexibility so that the city's protecting itself and its general fund from lawsuits, that we don't move judiciously in how we deal with this very complicated case. Would you see that's?
Yes, and I, oh, my, oh, Mike is on. I do want to point out that we have a very short timeframe here, because from the time this matter is approved by the County of Ventura, we would need to bring suit within 30 days. That's the statute of limitations period. And we, at this point, even though the planning commission will be meeting the 21st of this month, we still have yet to see a final supplemental EIR. So we're going to have a very, have to have a very quick turnaround when we finally get that document.
So would you say we have the ability, given this timeframe, to follow Councilmember Burnson's suggestion that we send it to committees?
Well, it would, it would be, we would have to maybe try to schedule some committee meetings together. You know, I'm not an expert on how, on how that could be done, but it would be some, we'd have to do some hard work to, to try to do that.
My posture here is, as long as the city can establish its case.
Yes.
And as long as the city can show that whatever position it takes, it takes it in such a manner where we are protecting the general fund, that basically would be the direction I would hope we can go, given the majority sentiment of this body.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Mr. Holden.
I would just hope that the city attorney would not take a slingshot approach to filing a frivolous lawsuit. You always have the facts, and you don't have the facts. If you want to improve your case, know what you're filing your lawsuit on. Know what the, what the flaws are. You know, the worst thing about term limits, you're going to lose guys like Burnson. You know, you know, you heard what he said, and you heard what the, what the bank representative said, and you're not prepared to know what the flaws are in the EIR.
Mr. Holden, I would point out that I made this very same point to you when we were at the Madrid Theater, and you requested at that time that the council instructed the city attorney to bring suit, and I suggested that that be delayed because we didn't have the, the answers from Ventura County.
You made the point. Right, you don't have the information. The other thing--
However, we are much closer to having a final version of that document.
Closer, you're not there. Now, the fact of the matter is that we can expedite these committee hearings, but you need to, you need to share with the council exactly on what basis you want to file a lawsuit and you likely do to, to, to win. Because the moment you show flaws in what they've done out there, the same flaws were raised in Porter Ranch, the Grove. The neighbors there are just furious with what you approved. Warner Center, West Side Pavilion, Glad Vista, Via Marina. They can't, they can't walk down the street, let alone drive in those areas. Bumper to bumper individuals, and you sign off on it. Public transportation signed off on it. I mean, we're just thousands of units. I think it's the height of hypocrisy. What we have subjected to people in this city without mitigation, the traffic impact, congestion, you can't drive down Pico Boulevard at high noon, three blocks, while spending 20 minutes trying to get there. You cannot do it. And that's the problem Mr. Zine is appropriately raising, that's the issues he's raising. But if you're going to go to the court, you can't do it, take a slingshot approach. You've got to have the facts. And let's have those facts. Let's give them equal examinations. But if you're going to give us an argument, what you did here on these projects, what your office did, you're going to lose. All that guy's got to do is say, "You didn't do it for yourself. Why you want to impose it on us?"
Mr. Holden, as you know, the council exercises its authority on land use. The city attorney is, gives advice to the council.
Well, you gave advice, you say you've signed off on it. City attorney's approval, every one of those projects. I didn't hear, when those, when the Save the Bay, when those people came in here complaining about those develop, those projects that you were developing, you closed your ears and you signed off. I was here.
Well, I'm not here to speak on those matters.
Yeah, and I know that when it was sued, and, and your district, Mr. Zine, when the Joy Parkins was there, we said, "You can't stop that project." You did, remember? We were sued, we lost, had to pay.
No, we never had an Amundson Ranch. No, we didn't pay.
Yes, you, you did, you had to give them all the entitlements without them paying fees. Don't tell me you didn't pay.
You're talking about Amundson Ranch?
The settlement was Porter Ridge.
Porter Ridge.
Warner, Warner Ridge, Warner Ranch. Warner Ranch.
Warner Ranch.
Warner, Warner Ranch, Warner.
Okay.
Warner Ridge, whatever. We lost that case, and you had to pay. Now, we don't need any more frivolous lawsuits. Get the facts right first. We had to pay, big time. You don't, you know about that. Anyway, Mr. President, members, my time is up, and, and I think that Mr. Zine, I support you 100% in your intent, but you probably won't have a full hearing before committee.
Mr. Zine.
Question for the city attorney. Are we prepared?
Yes.
Okay, can you expound on that, and also can we hear from the mayor's office, please?
I would point out that we've been looking at this matter for a long time. We've already litigated it in the past, but now we're focusing on particular issues that have not been readdressed, issues that weren't addressed from the beginning with regard to pollution. And, you know, we've been meeting with others who are experts in these fields, and we can be ready to act if and when the County of Ventura approves the project, and if they do so without making the modifications that we've already suggested.
Do you see any purpose, any reason to send it to any committees for the information that you currently have? Would there be any benefit by sending this to any of the committees and the staff and the departments, or do you have sufficient ammunition and information that you feel comfortable proceeding in the event they approve it without any type of change? Do you feel comfortable with the knowledge and the experience that you've developed to this point to pursue? I don't, it doesn't appear to me that you're starting at ground zero, that you already developed the package.
No, that's true. As far as our office is concerned, we don't see any need to send it to committee. However, we're glad to, you know, work with the council in whatever way they decide to move forward.
Concern for some of my colleagues is that there's not enough information, and the reason to send it to committee was to generate additional information, so you'd be able to have a full package. And the concern is--
Be it necessary or not. As far as we're concerned, no, it's not necessary. Thank you.
Ms. Galanter.
I don't challenge that you could go to court based on what you have now. I really don't want to argue with you about that. I don't want to argue with Dennis about that either. The reason that I think it should go to committee is that I think the City of Los Angeles has a number of issues that we struggle with all the time, the housing shortage and the traffic problem being the two major ones. And we haven't solved either of those. We aren't even close to solving them. But it seems to me, the reason that I was trying to articulate before, that I thought this should go to the planning committee, is that one of the things that I look at is that no matter where it's going to be, change is going to be uncomfortable. Change is always uncomfortable. And sometimes it's change for the better, and sometimes it's not, and sometimes it's inevitable, but it's always uncomfortable. And it seems to me that we ought to know, as the city council of the city that has probably the biggest housing problem, how the, given all the other considerations, how this project might help or hinder, and how stopping the project might help or hinder our efforts to solve the housing shortage in the City of Los Angeles. I'm not prepared to say today that, you know, on a score of one to 10, a chart of one to 10, it ranks this and this, that or the other. That's what the planning committee is for. But I think that we need to look at this issue, the whole issue of Amundson Ranch, not just in the context of the immediate neighbors, but in terms of the overall region. I have spent a lot of time in the last several months attending workshops and listening to people talk about how we're going to address the projected growth in Southern California. And everybody admits that we're going to have, well, you were there, Ed. Everybody admits that we're going to have to accommodate a lot of growth. The thing they didn't ask in these workshops is, "How are you willing to do it in your neighborhood, or my neighborhood, or, you know, your neighborhood?" And so the problem is, everybody's going to have to participate in solving these problems somehow or other. So I think that we really need to have our planning committee, which is, which, and the others are fine too, but the planning committee is the one that's really charged with helping us understand how all the problems fit together and how all the solutions might fit together. I did actually have one question, as I reread the motion and listen to you, Keith, and that's, what happens if Ventura County approves it with some changes? Make some changes, because this motion is very specific, that if they don't make changes, then, then, then you're directed to sue. What if they do make changes? Or what if they make half the changes we recommended and not the other half? Then procedurally, where are we with respect to this motion?
Then I'll be back in front of the city council for further direction.
Okay.
If we get those, if we get such changes.
And, and who is it, this is a related piece of it, I know my time's up, but who is it who has to make the determination that the changes they've recommended, if they've recommended, if they've made some, are significant? Is that the full council or the city attorney, or who does that?
Oh, deciding whether to come back or not, I suppose that--
No, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm not clear. The, the instruction is if they don't make significant, I've lost it here, it's here somewhere, significant changes, that then you're directed to sue. So let's suppose hypothetically, they make some changes. Somebody has to decide whether they're significant, and therefore you have to come back to us, or whether they're not significant and you are indeed instructed to sue. Who makes that decision? You, or the council, or Dennis, or how do we do it?
Well, I would think it would, it could, it could be up to anyone in this room to decide whether to reconsider the matter. They could, could bring it back. Personally, I would side on being cautious, and if anything is unclear, I'd like to bring it back to council to seek further clarification. But I think any, anyone in this, any member of this council could bring it back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before calling on the next speaker, Mr. Zine has made an additional request to have representative from the mayor's office.
A response from the city attorney, also from the mayor's office at the same time, and if we could please hear from the mayor's office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. The mayor has before and continues to stand with Mr. Zine and other elected officials who have decided to oppose this project. We believe in the mayor's office, that there have been sufficient studies made, and we are absolutely concerned with the issues that Mr. Zine and others have pointed out this morning, specifically these old issues being the traffic issues, the open space issues, the pollution issues. And we're also concerned, of course, with housing issues as well. It's our opinion that we do need more housing in this community, but this is not the way to go. The impact of this project is simply too huge to the remaining residents of the West Valley area, to the other general region, and if we think that there are better ways to go. So we stand in concert with Mr. Zine and other members who support this, this motion, and urge the council to pass the motion as presented by Mr. Zine in its original form. Thank you.
Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, you know, I, I have great respect for Mr. Pritzker. I've worked with him on a number of things for the city through the years, and I do respect his views and his abilities. I'm just concerned, my view, in my view, the one chance we have of prevailing, have we established what it would take to totally mitigate this project as far as traffic mitigation is concerned and congestion management, as well as jobs housing? Have we addressed the jobs housing issue as far as the project itself is concerned within a immediate radius? And particularly, do we know exactly what we would have, they would have to do to totally mitigate the traffic impact? Have we, have we spelled that out in our, in our, in our challenge?
Yes, we have, and I'd like to ask Alan Rifkin if he could address that.
Alan, you've spelled that out completely, what you've said, what they have to do?
What we've done is commented consistently over the last decade that there's inadequate mitigation measures in the project, and--
But that's not sufficient, Alan. To say that it's not sufficient is not saying what it would take, because it's subjective. The judge or the jury are going to make a decision based upon what they think is sufficient. Now, what I think that we need to do, and I don't have any problem moving forward with your motion, by the way. I think, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned about predetermining that we're going to sue before we get the proper equipment, and determining whether we're going to go it alone, or whether we're going to go it with the county and with other groups. And I think there's another committee it should go to, and that should go to the finance committee, because there is a revenue issue here as well. But I think that we need to do, I think that the transportation department needs to come up with a challenge to the EIR that specifically says that this is going to generate so many trips per day, and here's what's necessary to mitigate that. This is what has to happen to the 101 freeway. This is what has to happen on Victory Boulevard that ties now into Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the entire Ventura County area up there. I mean, these are things we need to just say that, just to say that it's not adequate, because the County Board of Supervisors up there can, can make a determination that they think it is. So I think that we need some, some real concrete information that we throw into the questioning of the EIR. I think it gives us a much stronger position, number one. I, you know, because we're not going to be able to argue the housing issue. If we're going to argue this strictly on the housing issue, we're going to lose. We have to show why this is going to have an impact and what has to be done to totally mitigate this. And I, I don't know that just saying that it's inadequate is, is, is adequate for the courts, to be very honest with you. Now, I'd like to hear, hold my time on this. I'd like to hear your reply to that, Mr. Pritzker and, and Mr. Rifkin.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. What I wanted to say in response, and, as you mentioned, we've worked a lot on different issues over the years, is that the answers that you're looking for are answers that would come out of a traffic study that would be part of the EIR. And that's what we've been calling for since last spring, when the draft EIR was released, and we haven't seen that. And it appears as though we're not going to get it.
Okay, well, that's one approach, but it still doesn't give our approach to what is needed. Now, I think that we can ballpark without doing a total traffic study. I think we can ballpark based upon the number of trips and the impact that it has on the 101, particularly at peak hours, that I think that we can have a very, very strong case to argue why that traffic study was not done and why, why this EIR should not be approved. I think the best way of attacking the EIR, and that's the only way you have of attacking this project, by the way, is, is to attack the EIR. And if we don't do the, the homework, I, I, and there's another question about where this is going to be heard. If this is going to be heard in a Los Angeles court, maybe we got a shot. But if it's going to be heard in Ventura County, I guarantee you, we're going to lose this. So I just want to make sure that we're properly prepared. I'm not arguing, I'm not supportive of the project as it is. I will say that right now. I've said that one of my main objectives is financial, I will admit that. Obviously, we need all kinds of housing in Southern California, because if the housing doesn't get built in other areas, it's going to wind up in areas that are already impacted like yours, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Burnson, may I speak to you?
So I just, I think that we can possibly move forward with this, with this motion today, with the understanding that the report's going to come back, and that if there are changes, that you will come back to the full council for a confirmation before any lawsuit is filed.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Holden.
Ventura County, you have an idea when they think they'll complete their response to the EIR, supplemental EIR?
They must, by law, make that final version of the EIR available to the public 10 days before the board of supervisors votes on this. That date will probably be December 7th. It could be as late as December 17th. We are hoping to receive it earlier than that, so that we will have the time to copy, copy the document and distribute it to our city staff for additional comment and analysis and consideration.
To your city staff, and that's what Mr. Burnson was talking about. The fact of the matter is that we can, there's plenty of time to, to send this to committee to hear long before December 17th, to get some impression about where we stand relative to this project. We know how many people-- We know how many people are going to be living in that, that site, on that site, how many trips they'll make, maybe not coming to LA, we can also, how many trips they make in Ventura County. You can, you have some, some hypothetical number that are already established by the Department of Transportation. And then we can gauge even the impact it'll make, the traffic impact it'll make on our streets, and what has to be mitigated, if anything at all. There's plenty of time to do that. Now, you choose not to do it, fine, but that's not the first time you would be wrong, we just had a billboard on this that was signed off. And what happened, went to court, the court nailed you on it. The fact of the matter is that, it makes no sense, in my view, to keep taking these legal positions and filing lawsuits, and we lose. It just shocked me to no end, when I first got elected, and I learned, we had a yellow cab incident going on around here, where the city attorney came in, and I was, we had the different city attorney then, he was the mayor now, and gave an opinion on that yellow cab franchise. We lost the thing, paid $15 million of taxpayers' money a few years later. I mean, that's not the only thing. The water, I mean, the waste, the wastewater management system. We were sued on that, we said, "Don't worry about it." And what happened? The federal government is going to give us 80/20 to improve our sewer system, and we fought them in court and lost again, and went to spend $5 billion, bond measure with the pass, in order to do something we could have done for much, much less. So, I mean, your track record is not that good, in my view, when it comes to the big ones. But at the same time, you want to go this way, I have no problem with it. Go and be hit again, but I will say this, Mr. Zine, are you still around? I would like to offer a friendly amendment. The amendment is, before the lawsuit is filed, that you come back to the council and tell the council the basis for which you're filing a lawsuit, and how the EIR, supplemental EIR is flawed. I'd like to offer that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Reyes?
Well, you can say second to it, huh?
Colleagues, I just want to, you know, as we think about this, and we all talk about how we're going to affect our environment for our grandchildren, what's this region going to look like in the future? And for us to move in a, in a manner where it's not only housing, it's, it's the buffer zone, it's our water table. I mean, our water table is such that it doesn't recognize political boundaries. It gets contaminated, it gets impacted, we have to clean it. But what is the regional impact on our decisions? When I did go to that exercise with Councilor Galanter, at the table we have developers, environmentalists, we have preservationists, and it's easy to put little symbols on a map, and say, "This is where it should go." But the fact is, people are moving into Los Angeles, we do anticipate two to three more million people in the next few years, where are they going to live? And to San Perico here, but in Pico Union, I have 147 persons per acre now, and we have this housing crunch. And I keep saying, as one city, what's ailing these neighborhoods, the symptoms you're going to see in other places if we don't deal with it today. So there has to be a balance. And if we can deal with our water issues, using the LA River, natural habitats, using all the little forces that nature has to offer, we need to understand what are the true mitigation measures? And Councilman Bernson is right, we have to be specific. Are we going to add lanes? Are we going to do new on-ramps and off-ramps? Are we going to be putting in different mechanisms for dealing with the stormwater runoff? What are we doing to our environment? Let's understand that. And I don't think we're there yet. So I'm hoping, in the wisdom of our colleagues here, at least we have the option and the opportunity to put it on record, what we need to mitigate. And if we're going to move, let's move from a position of strength, and that is informed decisions, informed impacts, and get real specific to the mitigation measures that quantifies these kinds of impacts. We need to get there, and right now, we shouldn't be moving on, on just a motion, let's be very pragmatic and legal about how we process. So I'm hoping we have to maintain this, this regional perspective.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. It's been a stimulating debate, to say the least, on a very controversial project, and I appreciate the comments from all of my colleagues, and I think that it might serve all interest and all purposes to offer an amending motion on this matter, and that I would move that it be sent to planning, transportation, environmental, city attorney, and budget and finance, and that it return here for final confirmation on December 11th, where we can have all the answers, we can have it all taken care of, and that will be a day after Ventura County Board of Supervisors acts, so it'll give us an opportunity to answer all these questions, and based upon the decision of Ventura County Board of Supervisors on this matter, we can be here on December 11th, if that gives those departments sufficient time to have this matter resolved, and then we'll have an opportunity to bring it forward. So I would ask that, that motion, many motion be seconded, and then we can approve that and conclude our afternoon activities. Yes.
There's a motion, there's a second, and that may satisfy everyone, actually, so is there any objection to Mr. Zine's amendment to the original motion? If not, then let's take a vote on, on that as, we'll take a vote on that first.
One more question, are there any other departments that anyone thinks we need to send it to?
I think you covered the bases, if we add any more, we may not be back on December 10th.
Actually, the sending it to the EQ committee probably will do it, but I think sanitation, which handles the wastewater runoff, is important.
Okay. We'll ensure that.
Similarly, that's covered through Mr. Holden.
I want to make sure we're covering it all bases. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's open the roll on Mr. Zine's motion as amended. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
And with that objection, I believe that does away with the other amendments that were offered earlier in the discussion, those shall be received and filed, and we'll see you all back here in a couple weeks. Mr. Clerk, I know we have at least one item called special before we take up the special meeting agenda.
Item number 25.
Now before us, did you have cards on this item, the council calls forward Charles Winkler, followed by Jesse Incarnation, Gordon Murley, and Bruno Rist, if you can all come forward at this time.
Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charles Winkler. The city planning department approved and recommended this project, and the South Valley Area Planning Commission determination set forth realistic guidelines in their findings. They realized that the 36-foot height limit imposed on the downward slope side of any residence would in effect render the lot unbuildable. Their finding states on page F5, "The requested exception is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right or use generally possessed by other property within the geographically specific plan in the same zone and vicinity, which because of such special circumstances and practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships is denied to the property in question." I'm quoting, as you understand, and I'm still quoting, "The surrounding single-family residences are generally non-conforming to the 40-foot height requirement of the specific plan. The immediate homes to either side of the subject property are 48 feet and 55 feet in height. The applicant's request for a maximum overall height of 55 feet is compatible with the height of the surrounding homes. In addition, the proposed project would be limited to a maximum 13 feet in height, as measured from the center line of the street. When viewed from Iglesia Drive, the proposed project is 13 feet high, while the adjoining homes are 17 feet and 24 feet above street level."
Sir, may I ask you to conclude, please?
Therefore, to summarize, the proposal is lower in front, the same in back, and subjected to a greater side yard requirement, seven feet, than the adjoining residences, both with only five feet setbacks. Why should the proposal be thus penalized to a lesser profile or silhouette than its adjoining neighbors, and why should not this owner be entitled to the same limitations given to the other owners?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jesse Incarnation.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members. Good afternoon. My name is Jess Incarnation, I live at 21481 Iglesia Drive, Woodland Hills. I live adjoining the lot that's in question right now. One of the reasons that we are opposing all the, these variances that were given to this lot is that they are completely out of code. We are backed by the Mulholland Scenic Parkway, Scenic Parkway planning, which gives a 35-foot variance. This proposed lot also gives a seven, seven foot, they wanted nine feet, the plum board gave them nine, seven feet. The plum board has also renegotiated the height-specific limits that were actually given to them, and that's 40 feet and seven-foot side yards. And as I speak for Iglesia Drive, Insonata, Sand Blast, and all the adjoining houses that are surrounding this particular property, they're all in agreement with these plans, and we are asking that the council just preserve all the rules, the variances that are put into the area for our protection, as well as our scenic views and everything that we have to offer up in the Woodland Hills area. These are not areas that are, that are not, not, not flatlands, they're hillsides, they're very, very, my house, the houses that were, that were mentioned just previously, were actually built before 1992, when all the codes and regulations were actually put into effect. So we would just like all the codes and variances preserved as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murley, followed by Bruno Rist.
Yes, council, Gordon Murley, President of Woodland Hills Homeowners Organization. The problem we have here is, as many of you knew, it took 20, over 20 years for us to get the Mulholland Scenic Parkway specific plan. None of the houses that exist on those hills had, had to come under them. There have been a number of houses built in the area since the scenic plan, the hillside ordinance, the drag tract ordinance went into effect, and they've all adhered to it. And all we're asking is that things stay in scale, because this would set a precedent within the Mulholland Scenic Parkway, and allow everybody to come in and have overheighed houses and ruin the views that people have from Mulholland. He can have a 40-foot-high house, which would be in concert with the others, which still exceeds the 35 height limit that went through the plum committee on Tuesday. The council office has told the South Valley Area Planning that he thinks that as, as long as the ordinance is there, as it is written, it should be upheld, and unless the city wishes to change it, therefore, it has to be honored. So the council office has been very specific that when we have an ordinance, it's to be adhered to. And so all we ask is that you support the council office on this, and protect all of the efforts this council put into for the Mulholland Scenic Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rist.
Mr. President, council members, good afternoon. My name is Bruno Rist. I've been a resident of Los Angeles since 1959, and a 20-some-year residence of Woodland Hills, resident of Woodland Hills. I hope you'll permit me some personal observations regarding this project. I've seen the original proposal Mr. Mall suggested for his lot on Iglesias, and he proposed a home similar to the existing homes in the area, with a European and Bavarian accent that would have represented a very nice enhancement to the neighborhood. The plan has shut him down. I say the plan is too restrictive, and it should not apply in existing neighborhoods. If the existing homes in the neighborhood are not hazardous to the neighborhood, why should a new structure built to the same standards be? It makes absolutely no sense to me. The planning commission, the so-called Woodland Hills Homeowners Association, and the self-appointed neighborhood leader, Mr. Incarnation, have ganged up on Mr. Mall to kill the project. No helpful suggestions have been offered by anybody to find a way to use the light, to utilize the lot Mr. Mall bought about 15 years ago, paid taxes on and maintained. If he was able to build a home, it would be a win-win situation for everybody. The city would get a new source of property tax revenue, Mr. Incarnation would get a good neighbor, the community would gain an attractive and well-maintained new home. Sadly, it looks like everybody will lose thanks to the plan and the roadblocks to the project that have been erected. It is absolutely unfair to an average citizen who's just trying to build a home for his family.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number 25. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On this item, I testified before the South Valley Planning Commission recently on my concerns to uphold what has been put in place along Mulholland Drive, and I'm going to continue, as long as I'm representing that council district three, and that encompasses that scenic area, I'm going to continue to hold those rules, and we're not going to grant variances. And that message needs to be sent out to people who want to build in that area. It was designed for a specific reason, and we're not going to grant variances, and we're going to maintain the integrity of that ordinance that was put into place. When I talk about restrictive, it is restrictive, and I support that restrictive language in the ordinance, because that took a long time to come around, and I want to maintain that. There's a 40-foot setback, which has been granted, and, for the side yard, but as far as the integrity of that Mulholland scenic corridor, people need to understand, we're going to adhere to that ordinance, and we're not going to give variances. So that message needs to be loud and clear. So I support the plum report, I asked my colleagues to support the plum report, but we're going to maintain the integrity of that ordinance along that corridor, and there's really little to no debate on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please open. We have 10 members at this time. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, well, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I'd like to have item 39 reconsidered, please.
Okay, motion for reconsideration on item 39.
Mr. President, this is item 39 from last Wednesday, the 6th. Council files 022432 as a final tract map and CD1.
Okay, let's open the roll and reconsideration. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Okay, and Mr. Reyes, item 39 from the previous agenda is now back before us. Did you wish to call special, or?
Yes, special.
For discussion today?
Yes, discussion.
Okay.
Mr. President, when you reconsider, places the matter before you.
Good.
Correct. But sometimes there's requests to continue, sometimes there's requests to refer to committee, and Mr. Reyes wishes to discuss today. Before we continue the discussion, let me ask the guards here to help us to an inventory of bodies in the room. The roll has 10 members present, and we're counting to eight or nine here. Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, personal privilege there. Yes, council members, this is a case where I just want to make sure that all the conditions that were laid out in the tract map are actually committed. that were laid out in the track map are actually committed and performed upon. I do have a letter from Bianca Torrance, who's the president of this company, and my request is that we approve the map, but hold the certificate of occupancy until I make sure and it is approving that all of the requirements, including the landscaping plan, is adhered to. In the note that she has left us that is hopefully binding, it essentially says that that they are acknowledging that the landscaping on-site does not match the approved landscaping plan by the advisory agency, and they're committed to work with our office to comply with the conditions before the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. So I'd like to approve the track map with the understanding that we will hold the COO until they comply.
Mr. Burnson.
Can I help you a little bit with this? I would suggest that you not use the word "final," that even temporary certificates of occupancy should not be issued, because we've lost many conditions, because people already moved in on temporary certificates of occupancy. So I would suggest that you just modify that and say that even no certificates of occupancy, temporary or final, be issued until the conditions are complied with.
For the record, if I can keep it as a temporary, I will do that. If I can, I'll go with the final. But either way, I want to keep those safeguards in there.
Okay, so, Mr. Reyes, is that amending your original motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to come to the mic? Are we okay with that? I know we want to end council, folks, but I just want to make sure we close all our loops.
Good afternoon, Bianca Torrance, Designer Properties President, and I am aware that the landscaping on the site does not match the approved landscape by the Plan Advisory Agency, and I am committing to work with the agency to comply with the requirements and the conditions. I would request that approval of the final track map be approved today, and then I will work with the, with the office closely to comply with the conditions.
Okay, so with the understanding of the, we'll be holding the temporary COO and the final COO?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We have...
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes's motion as amended before us. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Mr. Clerk, if that concludes the regular meeting agenda, let us temporarily recess, and would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
Burnson, Glanter, Garcetti, Gruehl, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla. 10 members present in a quorum.
Thank you very much. Members, we do have a one-item special meeting agenda before us. Members wishing to discuss or debate item number one of the special agenda? Seeing none. With public hearings having been held on this item, Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, the ordinance will be held over one week for a second reading on November 15th.
For short of 12 members. This concludes the special meeting agenda. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting agenda. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda is special one. It's a motion brought forward by Councilmember Weiss, seconded by Councilmember Zine, and the city attorney will speak to the need to make findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, members, in order to consider Councilman Weiss's motion, there needs to be a finding made that there is a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need to take this action arose subsequent to the posting of today's council agenda. I believe Councilman Weiss will speak to those findings.
Briefly, colleagues, this is a request from our colleague in Council District 11 for the need to close a certain street. It arose on emergency basis. She was not able to be here today, and was happy to put the motion in. I ask for your support.
Okay. Other members wishing to be heard on the findings? Mr. Holden, on the findings? Okay, let's open the roll on the findings. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Special one now before us. Mr. Holden, on the motion itself.
On the motion, it says that the Bruce Almighty Production has also expressed their willingness to reimburse the city for all costs associated with providing this service. We don't know whether or not they're financially able. Is it a large production, small production? How much is it going to cost? And after the fact, whether or not, I mean, how can we demand that they pay? And maybe the Department of Transportation can only tell us that, but I tell you that this, it could be a problem if they don't pay. We're putting traffic control officers out there, and most times, we have them reimburse the city. Can anybody speak to that?
Is there staff here to answer those questions? Mr. Weiss, Mr. Burnson, able to answer those questions? Mr. Holden, can you repeat your question, please?
Yeah, my question is that in the third paragraph, they talked about this production company and their willingness to reimburse the city for the traffic control officers that are being deployed there to direct traffic. And this, you know, we don't, we don't know, sure if this, no, they said their willingness.
You know, Mr. President, may I be recognized for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure, Mr. Weiss.
I was delighted to introduce this motion for my colleague from the 11th District. I would be delighted to introduce a motion for my colleague from the 10th District or any other member who's not able to be here for a matter that requires, make finish, Mr. Holden, requires immediate attention. I, I have a lot of faith and confidence in that office, and I would urge approval of the motion.
I would not speak against the motion, but ask you a specific question. The question is about the production company. All you had to say is that if, once the production is over, maybe the Department of Transportation can come back to us and say they have paid or have not paid, or they are substantial and can pay. Of course, I'll introduce a motion for you as well. Not that I'm objecting to the motion.
Okay, Mr. Holden, we're...
Mr. President, members, I would approve the motion, certainly, short notice, but I would ask the Department of Transportation to report to us when and if they received the payment for services rendered.
That sounds like an amending motion. Is there a second?
Sounds like a great amendment. I'll second it.
Mr. Burnson, second.
Let's get out of here.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'd like to get out of here, too, Mr. Burnson. Just very briefly, I was just informed about, because of the rain, a production that had to change its schedule in Hollywood, and that DOT hadn't been informed about that by EIDC. All right, DOT can't, we're informed today, deploy officers on this short notice there. It may present a problem with this one, too, and I don't know if there's anybody from DOT. If they can't come one place in the city, I'd be surprised they can come another place. So I don't know if there's anybody from DOT who can comment on it, but I, I do know that both are supposed to happen now, and this presents a problem.
What do I know? I just...
Mr. Weiss? Mr. Labange?
I have votes to support it, but I think we have to also have more traffic control. Keep LA working, keep production LA, but get traffic control out there.
All right, well, if we can just put this forward with, if DOT or anybody is listening to make sure that we deal with both of those.
Let's open the roll on Mr. Holden's amended motion. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, let's open the roll now on...
Maybe I can add amendment.
On special one as amended.
Can I add another amendment, maybe with CD Levin's consent on this, that it would not necessarily bump out any other production that DOT has been asked to deploy officers?
I think a logistical challenge for the department to handle and accommodate all productions. On the motion as amended, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Forthwith, please. Next item. Mr. Clerk.
Just a minute, I'm trying to gather these amended motions. Now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items.
An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda and seeing no requests, public comment for today's meeting is closed. Mr. Clerk?
Motion for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
Councilmember's request for excuse from council attendants, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on Wednesday, November 27th, to arrive late for city business, this meets policy.
Mr. Zine is excused.
And Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused on November 20th to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Weiss is excused.
And the desk is clear.
Members, are there any announcements today? Mr. Labange.
Yeah, just one, one very important announcement about you, Hal and Nate, that Monday is Veterans Day, and let's all stand and salute our veterans like Hal Burnson and Nate Holden, who was a veteran and who served this country well, and all those veterans who, through the time, are a great generation and throughout, and we had a Vietnam veteran in here today that I honored, and those in other areas, those men and women of the armed forces, all the veterans, would like to salute them. Second announcement, on Sunday morning, in Griffin Park, Shane's Inspiration has its fun run. That's the boundless playground that we want to see throughout the city of Los Angeles. So come join us at 8:00 AM at Park Central for salute Shane's Inspiration and their fun run this Sunday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Members, are there announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
On Veterans Day, colleagues, we will be having a Veterans Day march in historic Filipino town, which will include members of the United States, or veterans of the United States Armed Forces, as well as many of the Filipino veterans who fought alongside them in World War II. It'll be going along Temple Beverly, Temple and Beverly between Union and Virgil. So please join us 9:30 AM. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other announcements? Seeing none, are there adjourning tributes? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, you too.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.